Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. I now call on Mr. Franco to explain the features of the Zoom platform. Mr. Franco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to walk through some of the functionality of Zoom and tell you how to navigate around the platform. By default, your microphone will be muted and you'll be unable to unmute yourself until the support staff for this meeting gives you permission to do so. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will call upon you. A few seconds later, you will see a prompt on your screen asking you to unmute yourself. You may have to click OK to acknowledge the prompt. After seeing the prompt, you will need to complete the unmuting process by clicking Mute/Unmute in the bottom far left-hand corner of the screen. A note to town meeting couples, please be sure that you only have one of your audio devices, one of your devices audios on when you unmute yourself. Having only one audio output will help limit audio interference for others in the meeting. If you are a town meeting member who has joined tonight's session by phone, your microphone will also be muted by default. The votes of town meeting members participating via phone will be captured via a roll call following the completion of the voting period. This will be, obviously, require town meeting members joining by phone to be unmuted. The support staff for this meeting will handle the unmuting process centrally and no action will be required on the town meeting members' part. When called upon by the moderator, those on the phone will need to wait approximately three seconds and then tell the moderator how they wish to be recorded on the pending vote. Immediately to the right of the Mute/Unmute button is the Start/Stop Video button. This button allows you to turn your camera on or off. If you're comfortable doing so, and if your internet bandwidth and technology allows, you may turn your camera on. If you experience choppy audio or video during tonight's session, we suggest you keep your video off for the duration of the meeting. Turning your video off will limit the internet bandwidth you are uploading, thereby allowing more room for you to download audio and video. As a reminder, if your camera is on, it will broadcast everything it captures to those present in the meeting. Please be mindful of this. The Participant button, immediately to the right of the Start/Stop Video button, allows you to see the name of everybody present in the meeting. At the top of the list of those present, you will see a number of accounts related to the running of this virtual town meeting. Below these accounts, you'll see a list of town meeting members, staff, and guests present in the meeting listed in alphabetical order by last name. Next to each name, you'll see information about who a town meeting member represents, a precinct number, or the letters AL to denote at-large status, or that the person is a guest in the meeting. A guest might be a non-town meeting member presenter on a warrant article or town staff. As an example, this meeting naming convention would make a town meeting member appear as Obama, comma, Michelle, P1. Immediately to the right of the Participants button, you will see the chat icon. You can ask us the chat feature by clicking this icon. During town meeting, you will only be able to chat with the chat monitor. This means you will be unable to chat with other town meeting members individually or as a group. So please do not use the chat feature to try and broadcast your views on a particular article to your colleagues. During town meeting, the chat feature should be used for only two purposes. One, to get in line to address town meeting akin to lining up at the microphone during an in-person town meeting. Your request could, for example, be to ask a question or to make a comment. If you wish to ask a question or a comment during town meeting, please send a message to the Chat Monitor account that contains, in this order, your first name, your last name, the letter P, and your precinct numbers, or the letters AL, and the word question or comment. For example, Hillary Clinton, comma, P5, comment. The second reason you might use the chat feature is to raise a procedural point. For example, to call the question or to raise a point of order. If you wish to make a procedural motion during town meeting, please send a message to the Chat Monitor account that reads first name, last name, the letter P, and the relevant precinct number, and the type of motion you wish to make. For example, Michael Dukakis, P4, point of order. As the Chat Monitor account receives requests from town meeting members to ask a question or to make a comment, I will do my best to post a running list of the queue in the chat. To see the queue, you will need to click on the chat icon. Town meeting members will immediately be called upon if they have a point of order or are calling the question. As a reminder, amendments to warrant articles will not be accepted via the chat feature. Finally, please do not use the chat feature to submit requests for technical assistance to make comments about warrant articles or to engage in any side conversations with the chat monitor. If you do require technical assistance during the meeting, please contact tm@brooklinema.gov or call 617-879-1310 and identify yourself as a Brookline Town Meeting member. At the bottom right of your screen is a closed caption button labeled CC. Tonight's meeting will be closed captioned to make the proceedings more accessible to town meeting members, guests, staff, and members of the public watching on big. Anyone who would benefit or enjoy seeing the closed captions is invited to utilize this functionality. To see the captions, click on the CC button and select Show Subtitles. To turn the captions off, click the CC button once again. There is no requirement that you use or do not use the captions. Once again, if you encounter any technical problems during tonight's session and require assistance, you should contact tm@brooklinema.gov or call 617-879-3110 and identify yourself as a Brookline Town Meeting member. The Chat Monitor account is unable to assist you with any technical difficulties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. I have a few announcements before we start our proceedings. I want to say that almost exactly four years ago, I stood before you and expressed my concern about the existential threat to democracy represented by the recent election of Mr. Trump as president. Our experience over the past four years has been far worse than anything I could have imagined at the time. This terrible president and his sycophantic toadies has caused damage to our democratic system and polity that will be felt for years. Now at least we have a new president, but the probability of political gridlock for at least the next two years is, will severely limit the possibility of repairing the damage that's been caused. All of this is by way of saying that there is an enhanced importance of the exercise of democracy on the state and local level. And of course, on the local level in Brookline, that's exercised principally through our town meetings. So I ask you to be proud of your participation in our democratic process. And I sadness that I have seen in town meeting. And that certainly exists on the national level will feed with our town meeting process. I want to review quickly the only for requests to speak, questions for the chair. I may call for a second, in which case you can use the chat line to second a motion. The voting procedures, which you'll recall from our annual town meeting, are as follows. When we before we start the voting period of 45 seconds, a screen will drop into your, onto your computer screen. And it will be labeled the with the name of the motion that you're voting on. It will have been my job before we get to a vote to make sure that everyone understands exactly what motion is being voted on. So that when the voting period starts, you will have three choices. Yes, no, abstain. You will click on one of them and then click on Send. Bear in mind that once you send your vote in, you cannot redeem it. It's final. Once we have completed the vote, I will announce the vote, I will announce, I will first poll those of you who are logged in on the phone. I have only Mr. Jones at this point. I need to know who else is on the phone. And I will take a quick roll call of those on the phone and then announce the final result. The next morning, the results of all votes, all of which will be recorded, other than very ministerial votes like motions to adjourn and so forth, will be posted on the town website, and you should all check the website the next morning to make sure that your votes have been properly recorded. If they have not been, then it's up to you to contact the town clerk and me and ask that your vote be corrected. Remember that as I call on you to speak, to start with your name and precinct, and absent any special dispensation by me, you will be limited to three minutes in your presentation. That concludes my remarks, and we can now proceed to a practice vote, which is, in fact, a statutory requirement. We need to take a vote to approve the conduct of a virtual town meeting. So the motion is to approve the conduct of a virtual town meeting at this fall town meeting, and whenever you're ready to... Okay. The voting period has started. Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention that only town meeting members can cast a vote. Anyone else, you will have the screen before you, but please do not cast a vote. It will just skew the results and cause us, cause yourself some embarrassment. All right, Mr. Jones? Gary Jones? Okay, Ms. Grenoff?
Okay, I am, I am actually also now able to see you. I had lost my internet. So I, I've hung up.
So you'll be joining us electronically?
Yes, and I actually did cast a vote.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Senical?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Moderator, Gary Jones, Precinct 3.
This is a practice
The last town meeting, Mr. Moderator, I couldn't
Sorry, you've been inadvertently muted. Mr. Jones? Well, we're going to have to proceed without Mr. Jones or Ms. Senical's vote. We'll hopefully smooth this out as the, as the process proceeds. So the practice vote succeeded. That is, you voted in favor of it by a vote of 224 in favor, and three abstentions, three opposed and six abstentions. I call your attention, that's 233 voting town meeting members out of a total of 248. That's a astounding turnout. The, we will now proceed with the articles, and the order of the articles is, we will take the articles in the order in which they appear on the warrant for Special Town Meeting Number One. Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry for the interruption. Point of Order, Paul Warren, Precinct 1. I noticed that when you were taking the vote tally, the vote showed up on the screen prior to you calling on the people on the phone. And I recall, last town meeting, we corrected that problem and only displayed the total vote after the telephone participants were polled.
Is that possible? The Yeah, the, the problem is displaying the vote before I take the roll call of the, those on the telephone. So please don't, after I've taken the, raising that point.
Thank you.
We'll take the articles in the order in which they appear on the large warrant at 7:30, or almost immediately. We will proceed to, with the Special Town Meeting Number Two, the special within the special, which has three articles. And without, I think I'll have one article from the main warrant, and then we'll proceed to the Special Town Meeting Number Two. So the Article One, on the warrant for the main town meeting, is motion to, that the town establish that the number of wooden bark be two, to be appointed by the Select Board, moved by Mr. Sandman and seconded by Mr. Van Skoyak. I call on Mr. Van Skoyak. The, it's in the words of the article on page 1-1, but modified to create a, an actual vote. So it should read, voted that the town establish that the number of measures, et cetera. Mr. Van Skoyak?
Yes, thank you very much, John Van Skoyak from the Select Board. As one who is still putting down roots as a member of the Select Board, it is a treat for me to speak in favor of Article One. My colleagues didn't ax if this would be oak with me. They just put my feet to the fire and said, let the chips fall where they may. Not content to leave well enough alone, I assured them I'm all for Article One, which is truly one of town meetings evergreens. I'll go out on a limb, in hopes that my comments, maple, some of you in favor of Article One. Not, I guess it's chestnut my day. You've heard enough, far be it from me to make you sicker more. I trust you will not pine for my return, and I urge you to vote in favor of Article One. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandman.
Mike Sandman, speaking for the Advisory Committee. In the past town meetings, we made fun of this office. Mr. Spiegel and Mr. Lynn Jones regaled us with puns, and Mr. Van Skoyak has as well. Measuring wooden bark is, however, no laughing matter. It has significant financial implications. In Boston, the measurers charge a 10-cent fee for each cord of wood that they measure, and they attach a ticket to it to assure the consumer that it meets legal specifications for a full cord. Any vendor who offers wood without a ticket is liable for a fine of $5, 50 times the 10-cent fee. Brookline has no such fee. If we did, the Advisory Committee believes it could mitigate our looming FY22 revenue shortfall. Every dime helps. We urge the Select Board to establish an appropriate fee to support the office of the measurers. It's a tough job, 24 by 7, since there is evidence that people from Boston are sending in fraudulent cords of wood. The evidence, just look at all the sticks floating in the muddy river. But we can't let the financial benefit we get from collecting 10 cents on each cord of wood to take precedence over our environmental concerns. Using wood as a fuel runs counter to our determination to eliminate carbon emissions. Therefore, we suggest that no one born after January 1, 2000 be allowed to purchase cordwood. Meanwhile, the mechanism to protect Brookline from undersized cords of wood exists, and we can protect both consumers and raise revenue if the Select Board enacts a 10-cent fee per cord. To paraphrase the philosopher Tom Lur, "We can do well by doing good." Thus, we urge that monetary bite be put into this bark. By a vote of 27 to 0 with no abstentions, a unanimous Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article One, authorizing the appointment of two measurers of wooden bark. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on page 1-1, main motion, Article One, ready for a vote? Go ahead. Okay, the voting period has started. Yes, if you're in favor. No, if you're opposed. And abstain, if you're abstaining. Okay, the period is over. I call on Mr. Jones for your vote, yes or no?
Mr. Moderator, Gary Jones, Precinct 3, votes yes.
Ms. Senical? Okay, what's the, what's the count? May I have the count, please? The motion carries by a vote of 209 in favor, five opposed, and 13 abstentions. I now adjourn the Special Town Meeting Number One and convene Special Town Meeting Number Two, which consists of three articles, the first of which are the budget adjustments, Article One. Article Two is the financing of the balance of the Brookline High School project, and Article Three is the acquisition of the Newbury College property on Fisher Hill. Article One is found on the, in the warrant for the Special Town Meeting Number Two on page 1-7. It's a complicated motion consisting of actually five separate votes, the first of which is at the bottom of page 1-7, to amend the budget as indicated in the table under that item. The second of which is in the middle of page 1-8, to amend the Gulf Enterprise Fund funding, as indicated in that vote. The third is on the, toward the top of page 1-9, to authorize the Park and Rec Commission to operate a revolving fund. The fourth is on page 1- Okay, where, where, where was? Okay, so where should I start? Okay, the second vote, I'll repeat myself here, is on page 1-8, to amend the Gulf Enterprise Fund. The third vote on page 1-9, to authorize the Park and Rec Commission to operate a revolving fund. 10, to appropriate $500,000 for the Davis Path Footbridge. And fifth vote on page 1-12, to appropriate $245,000 to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads and bridges. The, while there are five separate items, we will have a single vote, and it's moved by Mr. Sandman, seconded by Mr. Green. We also have before us a resolution offered by Mr. Sandman, seconded by Ms. Banka. The resolution is found on the page one and two of the Supplement Number Three that was sent to you by email today, that the town adopt to the, urging the Select Board to take the actions listed on page two of the, of that Supplement Number Three. There is a motion to amend that motion. That is found on Supplement Number Four, which was also emailed to you this and that motion would, referring to the Advisory Committee's motion, would delete the Sixth Whereas Clause relating to the Massachusetts Constitution, and change Item One, and insert a new Paragraph Two in the Resolve Clauses, as will be more thoroughly explained by the speakers on this, on these, this resolution and the amendment. The amendment is moved by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Bastian. Sandman, you have six minutes, sir.
Good evening. Michael Sandman, speaking for the Advisory Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. These are challenging times. We are being impacted by two conflicting pressures. Over the last four years, the federal government has worked to reduce support of the social safety net, and it's taken positions on issues ranging from climate control, climate change to racism that run counter to Brookline's sensibilities. In the absence of positive leadership from Washington, there's pressure from local and state government to step into the vacuum. And at the same time, the impact of COVID-19 has reduced the ability of state and local government to respond. And in the background, over the last two decades, wealth has increased for those at the top, while many Americans have found it increasingly hard to maintain their standard of living. Brookline finds itself caught in this fiscal meat grinder. We're increasingly aware of increasingly acute social issues, and increasingly interested in taking local action. So we're left trying to solve nationwide problems with local dollars. At least a dozen of the warrant articles we're voting on at this town meeting can be traced to a deeply felt urge to do something to help those in need. The resolution that has been submitted by the Advisory Committee on Providing Aid Related to the Impact of COVID-19 is a further example of that, and certainly to the impact of COVID-19 is a further example of that, and certainly, this budget impacts that concern as well. Our desire to use local dollars comes at a time when our revenue is down and our short-term expenses, particularly those of the school department, are up due to the pandemic. But that's not an excuse for sitting back and doing nothing. It is, however, a constraint on what we can realistically do as a town. And nationally, while the pendulum will swing back, it will take years to undo the damage that's been done. As you evaluate these budget amendments and then consider the resolutions calling for action on economic equity, racism, housing, and food security, please remember the constraints. We have to have a balanced budget, and our FY21 revenue in terms of local receipts has declined, as I'll describe in a minute. Fiscal year '22, which starts on July 1 of next year, looks like more of the same or even worse, because we expect state aid will be cut unless there's significant relief for the states and localities from Washington. Right now, every dollar spent on a new initiative is a dollar that has to be withdrawn from some other service or activity, and each of those services or activities have a purpose and a constituency. We still need to reevaluate, and perhaps we order our priorities, but in the end, there will be a gap, a gap between what we would like to do and what we can do. If the advisory committee has one message for you, it's that we need to be realistic about that gap, even as we maintain our aspirations. Or, as you hear on every train in London, mind the gap. Okay, now on to the budget. The slide in front of you shows the adjustments up and down that are being made. Each November, we have a motion to adjust the budget that was adopted at the annual town meeting. Local receipts are the first item on this adjustment. Local receipts are revenue that does not come from property taxes or from the state, such as meals taxes. The $1.9 million drop in local receipts is due to the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses. For the months of July, August, and September, the first quarter of the fiscal year, meals tax receipts are down by 54%. Hotel occupancy taxes were down by 68.26%, parking fines by 39%, and parking meter revenue by 47.9%. The impact of these declines would have been significantly worse overall if not for marijuana tax receipts. We did receive substantially more than we expected from the state, but we expect that state aid will be cut next year. The increases in expenses are detailed in the combined reports. The most significant by far is the increase in school expenses related to COVID-19, $1.75 million at this point, and very likely to go higher. The end result is a deficit of $1,016,457 before offsets. $1 million of that is being taken from the reserves the town meeting wisely set aside in June, and later on, I'm going to urge you to be very cautious about using those reserves. The remainder, the $16,457, is being covered by a decrease in state and county charges so that we end up with a balanced budget. Changes in the capital budget are listed in detail in the combined reports. The major items are the establishment of a $500,000 reserve account for removal of the Davis Path Footbridge across the MBTA tracks. That's not $500,000 of cash, but the establishment of an account to reserve cash. The allocation of $245,871.50 received from Uber and Lyft, that money is reserved for transportation-related projects, and it will be spent on pedestrian safety and on three programs that make up the Brookline Elder Transportation Program. The advisory committee recommends favorable action on the operating and capital budgets, the Gulf Enterprise Fund budget, the Recreation Revolving Fund, and the use of transportation network companies' assessment funds. The vote on the operating budget was a unanimous 24 in favor. Votes on the capital budget vary by line item and are listed in the combined reports. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. And I really hate to be rude, but I've had some technical problems. I wanted to read my speech, but I don't have a printer, so I'm going to have to slip over to Word, and you'll hear me, but you won't see my face. So my apologies. I don't need to be rude. Regardless of where you live, you cannot escape COVID-19. Brookline is no different, and for the poor, it's even worse. The Brown Amendment seeks to clarify how the town can best help fight COVID-19 on behalf of Brookline's most vulnerable residents. So what is it we want? I want to be clear, first and foremost, we're not asking for additional money. The town was very generous in identifying $300,000 in CARES funds to address food insecurity. But we do believe that the document could be clearer. We want the town to make a commitment to use town dollars and not just federal dollars to help its most vulnerable residents. And part of that is the reserve fund, but it may be other dollars. An emergency is an emergency, and I can picture no greater emergency than having insufficient food or not having a safe place to live and learn. The reserve fund should be available to address all emergencies, as should all dollars in the town's coffers, and not just the ones that, and not just the emergencies that we're familiar with. Early evidence indicates that the health and economic impacts of the virus are now being disproportionately borne by poor people, and we're on the verge of another surge. You will hear people tell personal stories as well as describe structural barriers to taking care of the elderly, children, disabled, and others who may need help. But here's the good news. You know, AC listened to our concerns, and you know, we reached substantial agreement. But again, the concern is the lack of clarity around language and a willingness to help, a willingness to use town funds in addition to potentially federal dollars. The town heard us when we said that the uninsured needed to be tested for COVID, and you know, they addressed that yesterday. There's going to be a discussion around how better to handle distance learning in terms of the IT barriers, especially at BHA. But here's what we did. We started out with a much larger sum, and in the name of negotiation and recognizing this town's financial problems, you know, we backed off on the BHA request, which was, you know, close to $600. We peeled back on some other requests, largely because we recognize the financial difficulties that we're in. So we're not trying to break the piggy bank, we're not trying to rob the piggy bank, and we clearly understand that there are going to be costs, and there are going to be trade-offs when we're talking about a limited pool of money. What we are saying is that if we don't clearly address the policies that go to how we allocate funds, then the social crisis created by COVID-19 will continue to increase inequality, exclusion, discrimination, and discrimination in the short term, medium term, and long term. So imagine a scenario where we decide we cannot spend town money on food or shelter because it'll come from our coffers and not federal dollars. In what world does that make sense? How is that fair? You know, let's fix this document so that we have a place to begin to have the conversation. I'm not saying that the money comes from there. I'm simply saying that we need a place to say that it's okay, should circumstances become dire enough that it's a reasonable option. So I would ask that you consider strongly the Brown Amendment, and thank you for your support.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. So there are two parts to Warren Article 1 that we're taking up. First, the regular budget amendment that we always take up in the fall town meeting. This time, we're going to have five votes on that. And second, an amendment to the budget amendment that has evolved over the last few days into a budget resolution. First, the purpose of a fall budget amendment is to amend the fiscal year, in this case, 2021 budget that we adopted at the annual town meeting, which this year was held in June, to update the budget for developments occurring between the annual town meeting and the fall town meeting. These developments include additional monies that are available from the state or other sources, and additional needs that have arisen, while still maintaining the budget in balance. Since the annual town meeting, we learned that we will be receiving higher net state aid than estimated in June by about $2,931,000, less, of course, offsets for the library aid. We will also have additional revenue from the state assessment on transportation network companies or ride shares like Uber or Lyft in the amount of $245,871, and I'll have an exact amount here, and 50 cents that was made available by the state in August after the June town meeting. The new needs and other details that the budget amendment will finance have been adequately addressed by Mr. Sandman, so I won't repeat them here. Since the financial collapse caused by the COVID virus and the collapse of town revenues, the town administrator has warned consistently of the impact of falling revenues and increasing needs, not only on our current fiscal year '21 budget, but successive budgets, especially fiscal year '22, when we are projecting a very substantial deficit and unlikely much additional state aid, and maybe, but probably not, significant federal aid. He has urged that we be careful in using, especially the reserve fund or other one-line budget strategies in fiscal year '21, because in the absence of assured, meaningful support from state and federal government, we are going to be in big trouble in fiscal year '22. The town administrator has specifically warned that the demands on the reserve fund from now until the end of the fiscal year are unknown and unpredictable, and I guess I can add scary. Second, with that as a context, an amendment to the budget amendment was presented to town meeting, to the advisory committee, I'm sorry, last week, that identified the town's reserve fund as a source of money for addressing the food, housing, and other needs of vulnerable town populations, which, as Mr. Sandman said, is something that we all are concerned with and are looking for ways, and many times successfully, to address those needs. After negotiations between the advisory committee and the petitioners for the amendment to the amended budget, a resolution was voted by the advisory committee last night with the apparent, at least going into the advisory committee, support of the petitioners. And that advisory committee resolution, by the way, was very, or is very similar in approach to Warren Article 32, which we will take up later, in that it sets up a process for determining what the actual needs are as a first step before spending the money for those needs. Shortly after the advisory committee votes, the petitioners came back with an amendment to the advisory committee resolution, as Ms. Brown has described. So the select board, at its meeting this afternoon, voted. We took two votes. The first is the select board's position. That first vote was to vote favorable action by a vote of 4 to 1 on the advisory committee's original resolution voted last night. The select board decided also to vote on the petitioners' amendment to the advisory committee resolutions that came early in the morning, early this morning, by a vote of the select board of 1 in favor and 4 opposed. Thank you.
Hello, just before I begin, I just want to make sure it's clear that this amendment does not lock anyone into the reserve money, the reserve budget. My name is Bonnie Bastian from Precinct 5. I am a general organizer for Mutual Aid Brookline. The Brown Amendment to the AC's resolution on Article 1 is a part of a series of budget equity articles, which include Warren Article 32 and 33, which will be addressed later. The resolution's original form was a budget amendment written to quickly allocate money from the current fiscal year budget as opposed to the next fiscal year, because we are in an emergency now. That first draft was the fire truck rushing to a forlorn fire. The Brown Amendment, things have been slowed down a bit. The fire truck is now taking the scenic route to the fire, but this is what negotiation looks like. I mention this because I want to underline the urgency of the problems at hand. What these budget equity articles do is begin to repair the social safety net in our communities. The Brown Amendment was written as a way to stop the bleeding. From the vantage point of Mutual Aid Brookline, what we see is enormous financial need from unemployed constituents and neighbors whose jobs no longer cover their living expenses. How do you go to work while overseeing your first graders' remote learning at home while trying to pay rent and keep the lights on? It's a question many are struggling with, but not all are on even footing. In this moment, the folks that were struggling before COVID-19 are standing on a precipice. I know from my work with Mutual Aid Brookline that one way to provide financial assistance in this moment is to lift the burden of the cost of food off of a family's shoulders. Mutual Aid Brookline serves a far smaller number of our food insecure neighbors than the Brookline Food Pantry does. They are strained and have been stretched to four times their regular capacity every week for months on end. They are lacking critical things like commercial refrigerated storage and trucks to transport food. With this resolution, we can deliver $300,000 to the food pantry. When we give the food pantry money to purchase food, it goes much farther than the groceries that we purchase at the store, because they can buy their food at a small fraction of the price. So investing this money in the Brookline Food Pantry is a very impactful way to come to the aid of our neighbors. The Brown Amendment adds language that was removed by the advisory committee version that makes sure conversations happen before the end of the year around what our constituents in Brookline public housing need right now. It asks the town to sit down with the BHA to lay out what is possible in these unprecedented times to address and support residents' Wi-Fi needs, the emergency of unpaid rent, and to understand what's necessary to maintain the neglected properties. Because while these are state and federally funded properties, the people who live in them are our constituents and therefore our business. I urge you to please vote favorable action on both the advisory committee resolution and favorable action on the Brown Amendment. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Bastian has pointed out the last-minute negotiations that have taken place around this resolution. This was precipitated by the filing by the supporters of the Brown Amendment of a comprehensive budget amendment. The filing was made about 10 minutes after the deadline last Wednesday for the supplemental Okay. As I was saying, the negotiations that have taken place over the last two days were precipitated by the late filing of a budget amendment, comprehensive budget amendment, which was filed, in fact, after the deadline for filed, in fact, after the deadline for the supplemental mailing. What this means is that neither the selectmen, the advisory committee, nor anyone else interested in the components of the budget adjustments had an opportunity to review this proposal, period, until the advisory committee did, met last night. But by that time, we were deeply in negotiations for a replacement resolution, and the budget amendment has, the competing budget amendment has been dropped. But this is not a way to run the army, and it shows some, I'm afraid, contempt for the town meeting process and for those who deliberate and labor so hard to make it comprehensible and understandable to our town meeting members. Now, one other point, I have been very remiss, well, not remiss, I've been, I've allowed speakers to exceed the three-minute limit, although Ms. Bastian didn't exceed it by very much. We do have a three-minute limit for presentations, and I will enforce that henceforth. Ms. Wolf Ditkoff. She's a school committee member.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Susan Wolf Ditkoff, Finance Chair, speaking for a unanimous school committee specifically on the PSB budget adjustment. It's no exaggeration to say that public education is facing the biggest crisis in this country's 244-year history. Practically overnight in Brookline, we have stood up a brand-new ninth elementary school with 684 students, brand-new educational model, new principal, new VP, everything from scratch. Plus, we've created two more entirely new educational models, hybrid and all in person. And even in person isn't in person as you remember it. We can't have more than about 10 to 12 students in class at a time, given our commitment to distancing, six-foot distancing. Though through all this, we've maintained our commitment to fully educate every child, the arts, music, physical, social, emotional wellness, and what our teachers have done is incredible. We've had Zoom Shakespeare plays, we've had more than 100 sports contests safely conducted. But even with an enrollment decline, it is massively difficult and disruptive to pull all this off, and most difficult when we take a racial and economic equity lens. So operationally, we've done all of this while overhauling our aging buildings in terms of safety, new tents, PPE, cleaning supplies, new air ventilation, and HEPA filters, and more. We've mobilized armies of parent volunteers over weekends to open enclosed windows in 1 million square feet of classroom space. And now our poor old buildings are considered by our peer districts to be among the best and safest in the Commonwealth. We've stood up four panels of the Remote Learning Task Force, which I feel honored to chair, along with eight completely independent volunteer panel chairs and more than 50 parent experts in their field. Again, this work, especially Panel Four, is considered a model amongst our peer districts. We've partnered with DPH to stand up a testing clinic right here in town, again, one of the first towns to do so. And since COVID began, we have served more than 75,000 meals, on track for 100,000 by Thanksgiving. We know our most vulnerable neighbors are disproportionately effective, and we deliver meals to three Brookline Housing Authority sites, including once-a-week pickups. Our staff has gone all out. We've done drive-by, front porch tech support for vulnerable families, parent support groups for English learner families, steps to success, and more. We've delivered thousands of Chromebooks, art kits, science kits, and other non-screen learning devices, and all this during a public health crisis and an economic crisis, which brings me to that. All of this costs money. All told, we have roughly a $5 million deficit, of which tonight's request is 1.75 million for salaries. We plan to max out state and federal COVID funds available, at least 3.5 million, and we're projecting another $1 million or so in remote learning costs, which we are hoping to manage down. There are many cost reduction measures we've taken, including combining unused budget items, reassigning dozens of staff from in-person to RLA, converting people into teacher positions, and more. So in conclusion, as you can see, we consider asking town meeting a last-dollar request, so we urge your support on this warrant article in order to continue Brookline's historic commitment to public education and centering the needs of all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Ms. Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rebecca Stone, Precinct Three. A number of us are not able to access the current version of the Brown Amendment and are hoping that maybe you can actually put it up on the screen so that everybody else who is having trouble finding the language can actually see what we're expected to vote on.
I'm afraid we can't do that. It's a very dense document, and it just won't, it doesn't lend itself to screen sharing. It was emailed to all town meeting members this afternoon, and it appears on the town website under night number one, supplements. I'm afraid you'll have to find it, and that's the best we can do. I call on Elizabeth Neal, N-E-I-L-L. She's not a town meeting member.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, and members of the Brookline community. My name is Liz Neal. I'm a resident of Precinct Three, and I am the Community Delivery Coordinator for Mutual Aid Brookline, which formed in response to the unprecedented needs caused by the pandemic. I urge you to take favorable action on both the advisory committee resolution and the Brown Amendment. My volunteer delivery team coordinates and completes grocery and medication deliveries for our vulnerable neighbors. Nearly half of our 880 deliveries to date have been fully subsidized at a cost of over $42,000 in donations. The Brookline Food Pantry has been serving 650 to 700 families weekly, more than four times the pre-COVID number. The pantry spent $94,000 on food in April through June 2020 alone. This is in addition to the more than $16,000 from MAB's Community Fund and the more than $9,000 in food vouchers through the Safety Net Fund redistributed over this three-month period. All of us are working flat out, Mutual Aid Brookline in parallel with the pantry and the Safety Net, and we are still seeing neighbors slip through the cracks. Norfolk County has the highest increase in child food insecurity in the country. This will unfortunately only worsen as we move into winter. Families have used their savings, and outdoor employers are likely to cut staff. Aside from food being a basic need, food insecurity lowers overall physical and mental health and contributes to critical public health outcomes. I'd like to thank the town for just today coming to an agreement with the vendor for Brookline's own COVID testing site to use CARES funding to provide testing subsidies. These will cover testing costs for symptomatic and close-contact residents who are uninsured through the end of 2020. This lifts the previous prohibitive cost of $140 for close contact and symptomatic testing, instead of asking our low-to-moderate-income residents to choose between the cost of two weeks' worth of groceries or losing time off of work and promoting community spread by traveling to Chelsea via public transit.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Additionally, this program will allow the town to gather data for the negotiation of future testing contracts and ensure that cost is not a barrier to essential COVID testing and the control of community spread, which, as we all know, impacts us all. We are glad to be united on this issue. The resolution at hand encourages us to find similar immediate solutions for food insecurity, a wide-ranging issue in Brookline that is severely exacerbated by COVID-19. The upcoming warrant Article 32 is designed to assess long-term disparities in Brookline, taking a careful look at what those disparities are and how they should be reflected in our FY22 budget priorities. But most immediately, this resolution for vulnerable populations addresses specific short-term needs that are truly essential to prevent further vital harm to our community. Please take favorable action on both the AC resolution and the Brown Amendment to alleviate the impacts of food insecurity on our community. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sandman, who will comment on the resolutions, which he had not the opportunity to do when he presented the budget adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you very much. Mike Sandman, Precinct, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, speaking for the advisory committee. I think there's probably a bit of confusion in people's minds in that we introduced the main budget resolution. There is a separate resolution that the advisory committee worked out with the petitioners, led by Ms. Brown, last night, and then an amendment introduced to that. The resolution that was worked out jointly last night by the advisory committee and the petitioners on a resolution to provide, that asked to provide $300,000 in uncommitted CARES Act funds for food services, is what's at issue here. We came away, the advisory committee came away from a very free back-and-forth discussion at nine o'clock last night, expecting that we had to put it in the vernacular, a deal. We now understand that the petitioners want to change what we agreed to. There is no practical difference in the outcome. Both of us have recognized that we have a $300,000 amount in unallocated CARES Act funds that would probably go to the schools if not for the agreement we thought we had reached last night. I will say that the addition in the Brown Amendment of a reference to maintaining safe, healthy homes and support reimbursements for unpaid rents in housing authority property is in conflict with what we all heard from the BHA executive director, who said there were decades-old deferred maintenance issues, but that BHA properties were safe and that no one was being evicted due to unpaid rent. It's a highly questionable tactic, to put it as politely as I can, to agree to something at nine o'clock after an hour and a half of discussion and reneg a couple of hours later. I hope you won't reward that tactic and that you'll vote in favor of the language the advisory committee agreed on with the petitioners last night. As I say, there's no practical difference, but I don't like highly questionable tactics. And I don't want to end on a sour note. The resolution, either way, is a major step in making sure that no one in this town goes hungry. The petitioners did well by bringing this forward. The additional research that need, that into needs that we've asked for will inform us as to how we can allocate our spending priorities, recognizing the constraints we face.
Thirty seconds.
This vote of 22 to zero, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on its version of the resolution regarding funding for food aid and other social needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Les Goyet. And a link to the supplements in the town website has been posted by Mr. Franco in the chat line. It's a way to get at the supplements three and four that we're dealing with with this resolution. Mr. Les Goyet? Okay, you've been unmuted. You have to hit the mute button on your own screen. Well, then we'll hear from Ms. Takinami.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Takinami, and I'm a recently caucused-in town meeting member for Precinct Ten, and I want to voice my support tonight for the Brown Amendment to the advisory committee's resolution on Article One, specifically on the inclusion of a mandate to review BHA needs with a report shared back to the advisory committee no later than the end of the year. I don't believe I have to remind anyone here that we're still in the midst of a historic global pandemic that's currently spiking to unprecedented levels as we speak. I cannot think of any moment or event I have seen in my entire life here in Brookline that has more clearly constituted an extraordinary or unforeseen emergency. And so I hope it should be obvious to everyone here that, given these circumstances, it is time for us to begin considering using any and all funding sources we have access to, to try and mitigate some of the devastating effects that this pandemic has wrought on our most vulnerable neighbors. While those who know me know that I don't often draw on my personal life or experiences when discussing issues in Brookline, I want to use my own family's experience during this time to highlight the urgency and relevance of the Brown Amendment, which would ensure a thorough report on immediate BHA needs, including supporting reimbursements for unpaid rent. My dad, a single father who lives in Brookline Public Housing, is one of the many residents who would benefit from such crucial funds. His current unpaid rent, brought about from his lack of ability to work in the tourism industry during this time, noticeably looms over his head, affecting his daily psychological and physical health. With the added economic and health insecurity brought about by the pandemic, his unpaid rent bills are constantly threatening his material housing security. Rent relief, among other tangible resources that will likely come out of the petitioners' resolution, would go a long way to ensuring hard-working community members like my dad get to stay in their homes, avoid eviction, and have the resources they need to get back on their feet. And we need to have a clear understanding of just how significant this rise in unpaid rent is, and that my dad's story is not an outlier, but the norm. Among BHA residents, the amount of unpaid rent could reach $47,000 in total, the highest it has ever been by the end of BHA's fiscal year.
You have one minute.
This is nothing short of a historic emergency, and we, as the town's legislative body, must act now before the situation becomes even more severe. And for those of you who are unclear about the effect of COVID-19 on housing issues, just ask yourselves, where have you been spending the vast majority of your lives these past few months? If we're to make it through this ongoing surge with the least suffering and death as possible, we need to do everything in our power to secure adequate housing for everyone in our community. If we need everybody to be socially distancing in their homes to make it through this, we need to do everything we can to remove the threat of eviction for our neighbors. We need to make sure that people can safely stay in their homes in the coming months, which means making sure people have heat, gas, electricity, functioning kitchens, and clean water to drink. We need to make sure that young people are still able to receive an education while at home, which means access to Wi-Fi and Internet-connected devices. If the most responsible thing--
Please conclude.
For those of us most affected by issues at BHA already know that, already know that's what's going to come out of this report. So I'm asking you all right now to take the first step by voting favorably on the Brown Amendment and on the advisory committee's resolution on Article One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Oh, there it is. Sorry, everybody. Am I in?
Go ahead.
Okay, am I in? Yeah, I saw a message saying I'm not being allowed to unmute. Thank you. My question is--
Who are you?
Marty Rosenthal, Precinct Nine, Chair of Brookline Bex, which also was not able to have a position on this. When Bernard was talking, I was going to ask why there were four votes against both whereas clause about Article 46 and the BHA resolve clause. Michael Sandman may have answered the second one, although I'd like to hear a little more about the BHA position on that, and also from Bernard, if he would, on why the select board was against both of those two paragraphs.
Mr. Green.
Okay. We did discuss the issue of inclusion of reference to the Reserve Fund as something that was problematic. It doesn't require that the Reserve Fund be tapped, but just putting that language in as a possibility is both unnecessary as well as risky, given the, given our concerns regarding our needs for the Reserve Fund going forward. I'd also like to add that no one should suggest that the select board and the town is not responsive to the needs of our most vulnerable residents. We absolutely are, and I think the advisory committee resolution would be, is, creates a process that enables us to do so in a way that doesn't impact negatively the other vulnerable populations in our town, such as school students, many of whom come from, I don't know about many, but a significant amount, a number of whom come from families come from families that have low incomes and are, have various insecurities. And the schools provide an essential foundation for their survival during this COVID period, in everything from, from food, as well as other things that schools provide. So I hope that answers your question, Marty.
Mr. Van Skoyak.
Thank you for recognizing me. This is John Van Skoyak from the Select Board. I, I just, I asked for some time just to make a couple of points quickly. Some, some members have commented that they haven't even seen the language of the, of the Brown Amendment to the Advisory Committee's resolution. I would suggest that that is, that is indicative of the problem with coming forward with amendments at the very last minute, especially when the providers of the amendment have themselves, just hours before, agreed to the wording of the resolution.
I think, I think we've castigated them quite enough, Mr. Van Skoyak.
I, I will leave it at that. But I, I think in the absence of, of the wording of the amendment, for those who haven't seen it, I, I think would be an extremely difficult decision to make, to vote for an amendment that hasn't even been seen. So I'm going to try to just add a couple of pieces of information as to the distinction that is created by the Brown Amendment to the Advisory Committee Resolution. The, the key part of the Brown Amendment is that it brings into the, into the resolution language that would suggest that the reserve fund be used to meet the emergency needs of the Brookline Housing Authority and the, in particular, the Brookline Food Pantry. And Emmy and others have spoken eloquently to the reality of those needs. Everyone wants to see those needs addressed. However, the money in the reserve fund does not fall from the sky. It is limited. And the interest of the town-funded programs in the reserve fund is significant. I'm going to give you one quick example. The Brookline Public Schools have programs that provide meals for schoolchildren, significant numbers of meals. They've been doing it all summer. They're continuing to do it now. Those programs, just like with the Food Pantry, are facing expanded needs. Those programs run at a deficit. The School Department is running a deficit. When the time comes, the School Department is going to have to go to the reserve fund, possibly for some replacement funds for the deficit that is created in the program within the School Department that addresses the needs of, of families in Brookline for meals, for food. Do we want to place our own town programs in competition with programs that are not town-affiliated programs, but private charitable programs for reserve funds--
Thirty seconds.
--town taxpayer dollars? I think not. And I think that's why the Brown Amendment, as well-intentioned as it is, should not be approved.
Ms. Brown.
Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I had a quick point of clarification. Mr. Moderator, I do apologize that I was 10 minutes late getting my paperwork in. Shame on me. But I hope that--
No, you were, you were about two months late, Ms. Brown.
Actually, no, I wasn't. No, I wasn't. And, and we can argue that another day, but this is a point of clarification. And the issue here is figuring out how we maximize the services to our most vulnerable. My point of clarification goes to a couple things. One, when we start talking about the reserve fund, nobody said we would dip into the reserve fund. We said, "When all else fails." And this notion that people are going to be picking at this reserve fund left and right, I, you know, that's, you know, it's unconscionable to make that argument.
You know, Ms. Brown, excuse me, you managed to break into the queue by representing your comment as a point of order, which requires--
Well, it's a point of clarification. It's a point of clarification--
No, it's--
--in response to Mr. Van Skoyak.
You're making, you're making a speech.
Well, I'll make my point of clarification much more succinctly. Mr. Van Skoyak is mistaken.
All right, would you cut her off, please? Mr. Ananian.
Let me try to dial the, the temperature down a bit, because it seems like--
Yes, Mr. Ananian. Who are you?
I'm sorry, I'm Scott Ananian, Town Meeting Member for Precinct 10. And I was at the Advisory Committee meeting last night. So let me start by thanking the Advisory Committee. As it, it may not be clear, but this was a motion filed by Deborah to make specific, concrete transfers to, to various needs in town. And there was a process with the Advisory Committee to turn it into a resolution, which interests a lot of the discretion about how to best allocate these funds to the Advisory Committee. The petitioners presented a version of this resolution to the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee made some changes, as is their right. They don't ask the petitioners for permission to make those changes. But, you know, as, as everyone who's gone through this process in town meeting knows, when you make changes, you, you risk the possibility that the petitioners are going to not agree with them and move their original motion, which is all that's happening here. So there are only three changes. And again, I thank the Advisory Committee for the broad areas that we did reach consensus on. And I do applaud them for recognizing some of these, these big needs. Again, there's only three changes. One, the petitioner's motion removes an objectionable whereas clause about the anti-aid amendment, which is disputable. The Select Board actually took a vote earlier tonight, which I don't think Select Board Chair Green reported, in concurrence with, with that removal. The Select Board sort of agrees with that. The second change was it adds back the reserve fund as a possible funding source. Again, not a requirement, but we think that all options should be on the table, and that to foreclose the reserve fund prematurely would be, would be, would be wrong. And the third change is it adds back some housing needs. And again, we'll compare this to Warren Article 32 later. 32, it's about fiscal year '22. This is about needs that are before fiscal year '22. This, this, this year, most of these are reports due before--
One minute.
Thank you, December 31st. So particularly, in the BHA housing, there are significant rents that are in arrears. The Housing Authority needs to decide what to do about them. If it is to forgive any of those rents, for example, that decision has to be made before the end of its fiscal year, which is March 31st. And we heard this from the, the BHA themselves. So that is a, a need. Again, this doesn't obligate the AC to, to provide funds for this, but we think it is a, a COVID-related need which will need to be addressed before the fiscal '22 processes that are foreseen in Warren Article 32. So again, I thank the Advisory Committee. I do recommend, urge town meeting to vote favorable action on the Advisory Committee resolution, which is the area of consensus here. But I also urge favorable action on the Brown Amendment for those three things, removing the anti-aid amendment, adding back the reserve fund as a possible source of funds, and to add back housing as a, as a potential need that may need to be addressed before fiscal year '22. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pelkey. P-E-H-L-K-E.
Hello? Can you see me?
Ms. Lascalzo has a point of order.
Wait.
So, Ms. Pelkey, stand by. Lascalzo.
I would just like to point out a point of order, the way the difference--
Who are you, please?
--of the two speakers being called out before Jonathan Skoyak was allowed to, was supposed to ask a question. I was allowed to talk for three whole minutes, and then cutting off Deborah Brown was not okay or acceptable. And that's my point of order.
It's not a point of order. It's a question of privilege and duly noted. Ms. Pelkey.
Yes, I had a very basic, kind of boring question after all of this. And I had, was wondering about the budget amendment to the Fire Department and why they are running a payroll deficit.
Is the fire chief here? Mr. Klechner, can you respond to that? Mr. Spiegel.
Stanley Spiegel, Precinct 2. Am I being heard?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. There's been a lot of discussion about the advisory, excuse me, about the reserve fund as a source of funding. The statute that allows a reserve fund explicitly states that no drafts may be made against the, against the reserve fund. It can only be used to transfer funds from it to some other line item in the budget. I think town meeting should be aware of that. It's explicitly is not legal, not lawful, for funds to be directed directly from the advisory, from the reserve fund, I'll get it right yet, to any other purpose, except to a different line item in the budget. And I believe that point should be made. Thank you.
Thank you. You've made it. Mr. Sandman.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm sorry to, to interrupt the flow here, I'm, with a point of order. But the chat, inadvertently, a, a link has been posted in the chat to the supplemental reports, and the link brings you to the original budget amendment submitted by Ms. Brown and her co-petitioners that called for something over $1 million in, in assistance of various sorts to the Housing Authority, food aid, and so forth. No one is proposing that at this point. What we are proposing is a resolution that's, that replaced that amendment. So if you're looking at that amendment, unfortunately, you've spent time looking at something that is no longer relevant. And I'm not quite sure how to get the information in front of people as to what is relevant, except to say that it was sent to you by email, by the Advisory Committee, and I believe separately by Ms. Brown for her amendment to the Advisory Committee's resolution late this afternoon. Thank you.
Well, we have a question that's been asked by Ms. Pelkey, why the Fire Department is running a deficit. And I've asked Mr. Klechner to respond to that. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Pelkey. The chief is in another meeting and--
No, I am, Mr.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chief Sullivan.
Thank you, John Sullivan, Fire Chief. At this point in the, in the budget, we are running a moderate deficit in our overtime account of approximately, excuse me, $75,000 for the year. The other funding is for contractual obligations that we have, which were not fully funded in the original budget.
Thank you. Mark Levy has called the question. Is there a second? You can second the motion on the chat line. Motion has been seconded. I have the following people lined up to speak to, it's a little difficult to say what their position will be, but here they are. David Desach, Arthur Conquest, Nicole McClellan, Jonathan Davis, Raul Fernandez, Megan Levine, and Len Hulley. If you vote to terminate debate, we will not hear from those people, and we will go directly to votes on the main motion and on the, the resolution and proposed amendment. So this is, call the question, Article 1 motion for the question. Okay. This vote will terminate debate, and no vote will extend the debate and extension. Requires two-thirds vote. Okay, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones? Ms. Senical?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, go ahead.
We have another town meeting member, Rita McNally, who, who has not been recognized, and she cannot unmute herself. You need, during the roll call, you need to, it seems, call her names and recognize her so she can be unmuted and be recorded.
I will certainly do that. I will certainly do that, Mr. Jones. I was not aware that Ms. McNally was on the telephone. What is your vote on the motion for question?
Mr. Moderator, Gary Jones, Precinct 3, I vote yes.
Ms. McNally? M-C-N-A-L-L-Y. Ms. McNally, hit star six and tell us what your vote is on the motion for the question.
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Senical, hit star six and tell us, hit star six in two seconds. And tell us what your vote is on the motion for the question. Okay, what's the count? Motion fails by a vote of 120 in favor, 122 in favor, 99 opposed, and eight abstentions. Mr. Toffel.
Good evening. Mike Toffel, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, there's so many people who seem to be unable to understand the exact distinction between, I believe, Supplement 3 and Supplement 4 that we're discussing. I wonder if, there's only three paragraphs. I wonder if you might read aloud the deletion to the whereas clause and the two additional paragraphs they're seeking to insert so just everyone is clear on what exactly we're talking about. Thank you, sir.
I'll be happy to do that after we hear all the other points of order that are pending. Ms. Gilman?
Jane Gilman, Precinct 3. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I just have a question about process. Is there any procedural way to table discussion on this particular section of the budget to allow town meeting-- to allow town meeting members to actually read the supplement? I feel like I have a choice of speed reading it now or listening to the presentations. And I don't feel like I can reliably and responsibly vote on this warrant article. Thank you.
Well, I take it that you can reliably and responsibly vote on the budget adjustment main motion? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
So it's the resolution and the amendment to the resolution that you feel uncomfortable about? Okay. Yeah, I can take a motion to defer the vote, the further debate, and vote on the resolution and the Brown amendment until a time, a specific time, and we'd make that perhaps the first thing tomorrow evening. If someone wants to make that motion, we'll, we will entertain it and vote on it. Say it again? Ms. Brown moves and... Mr. Brown, oh, Cliff Brown. Michael Burger seconds. So the motion is to terminate the debate on the resolution and the amendment to defer further debate, consideration, and vote on those items, the advisory committee resolution and the Brown amendment, until the first thing Wednesday evening, tomorrow evening at 7:00. Mr. Spritz? Mr. Spritz? You have to unmute yourself. You now need to talk. Mr. Spritz? Yes. So on the motion, this is a motion to defer the resolution. And we'll have a 45-second voting period. If you're in favor of deferring further debate and a vote on the resolution of the advisory committee and the amendment offered by Ms. Brown, you will vote yes. If you're opposed, you vote no. You can go ahead. All right, the voting countdown has commenced. Let's take some majority vote. Okay, on, Mr. Jones, on the motion to defer?
Mr. Moderator, Gary Jones, Precinct 3, Precinct 3 votes, votes yes.
Ms. McNally? And by the way, Ms., Mr. Jones, we know who you are, so all you have to say is yes.
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Ms. Senical? All right, what was the count? Fifty-five, no. Motion carries by a vote of 166 in favor, 55 opposed, and nine abstentions. But let me tell you how we're going to proceed, and maybe I'll defuse some of these points of order. We will defer consideration of the resolution and the Brown amendment until first thing tomorrow evening. If there are no objections, we will proceed directly to a vote on the main motion under, the main motion of the advisory committee and the budget adjustments. My sense is that most people who had signed up to speak would, were, wanted to address the resolution. I may be wrong about that. And we will then proceed to Articles 2 and 3 of SMT Special Town Meeting Number 2. We will adjourn that meeting until first thing tomorrow evening, and go back to Article 2 of the Special Town Meeting 1 warrant. So against that background, who's got a point of order? Mr. Schwartz? S W. S W A R P Z. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, it's Chuck Schwartz, Precinct 9. This is a question about the process. I'd like to ask that when supplements are posted on the website, that if it would be possible that they are posted with the date and time so that it's easy for us to find the most recent supplements? Thank you.
Well, I'm here to tell you that the advisory committee motion is supplement number 3. The Brown amendment is supplement number 4. And that's the best way to identify the, these motions. Next point of order? I'm not quite sure what that is. Ms. Weaver would, I'll try you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to make a point of...
Who are, who are you?
My name is Ann Weaver, and I am a town meeting member for Precinct 11.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a point of personal privilege that I'd like to point out that the moderator has cut off two women of color during the discussion tonight, and has not cut off anybody else. I am incredibly offended by this, as are many other people who have been telling me this privately, and I think you need to step down. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Weaver, let me respond to that. In the first place, I cut off Ms. Brown. And the reason I did so is because she, instead of joining the queue for her statement, which was not a point of order, she jumped the queue by claiming that she had a point of order which she did not have. When I pointed this out to her, she refused to leave the microphone, and I had no alternative than to cut her off. I'm very apologetic for having done that, but it was my only recourse at that point. I don't believe I cut off anybody else. So, next point of order. Lauren Bernard.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. Lauren Bernard, Precinct 8. I truthfully don't know if this is a point of order. This is a request for clarification. I would be very grateful if someone could resend these, these supplements we are to consider and read and vote on tomorrow night. Just send them in an email, you know, block letters, supplements to consider. I, I did not get an email. I cannot find the right things on the website. Maybe I'm just technically challenged, but I would just appreciate that.
Ms. Bernard, we'll make sure you get those first thing in the morning. Ms. Levine? L E V E N E.
Hi, Megan Levine, Precinct 3. I think this is a, I don't know, maybe a point of order. I'm just wondering, several of us have signed up to ask questions around the debate that is now postponed until tomorrow. Is there any way to maintain the order that, of folks that have signed up for questions? Or do we need to re-sign up tomorrow?
I will, you, you will need to re-sign up because I'm not quite sure how many of the people I have on the list have, will still want to speak. But I will certainly maintain the speaking order, which is Mr. Gesach, Mr. Conquest, Ms. McClellan, Mr. Davis, Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Levine, Mr. Hulley, Ms. Weaver, Mr. LaSqueye. And I will maintain that order. Would you make a note of those? Thank you. I would like to proceed to a vote on the main motion. Oh, Ms. Weaver, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
The other woman of color that you interrupted, name is Amy Takonami. I want to make that clear. There were two women of color tonight that you interrupted and you treated differently than any other white speaker. And you need to be aware of that, and you need to step down. Thank you.
Thank you, I have no intention of stepping down. I told Ms. Takonami that her time was up, that was all. And I'll tell anybody else who exceeds three minutes from now on that their time is up. And hope that I treat everyone with the same, the same as respect to the timing of their presentations. If no one has any objection, and you certainly may, if you wish, we will proceed to a vote on the main motion under Article 1 of Special Town Meeting. Yes, this is main motion, S D M 2, Article 1. Yes. And what we're voting on is a five-part motion. To review quickly, the five parts are, the first at the bottom of page 1-7 with a budget table, the second in the middle of page 1-8 relating to the Dolph Enterprise Fund, the third at the, toward the top of page 1-9 relating to the Park and Rec Commission, the fourth at the bottom of page 1-10, funding for the Davis-Pass footbridge, and finally, at the top of page 1-12, the appropriation for transportation network assistance. That's a motion of Mr. Sandman, seconded by Mr. Green. And I'm ready for the, ready for the vote. It is not a vote on the Brown amendment, it is a vote on the budget adjustments that I just explained. The Brown amendment will not be dealt with until tomorrow night. All right, we're starting the voting period. Yes, if you favor these budget adjustments proposed by the Select and Advisory Committee. No, if you, if you're opposed to them, then abstain, if you're abstaining. Okay, Mr. Jones, on the main motion? Yes or no?
Mr. Moderator, Gary Jones, Precinct 3, votes yes.
Ms. McNally?
McNally, Precinct 2, yes.
Ms. Senical? Motion carries by a vote of 205 in favor, 8 opposed, and 9 abstentions. We now turn to Article 2 in the second Special Town Meeting. The main motion under Article 2 is found at the bottom of page 2-8 to appropriate $32,700,000 for, to complete the renovation and expansion of Brookline High School. And it's a bonding vote, which requires a two-thirds vote. Moved by Ms. Banka, seconded by Ms. Heller. I call on Ms. Heller and Ms. Wolf Ditkaugh to give a joint presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Heller for the Select Board. Susan Wolf Ditkaugh is going to join me in this presentation. And she, we plan for her to speak first. She's from the school committee. I would ask, yes, thank you for the, to the IT Department for putting that, that up. Susan, has Susan been unmuted?
Good evening. All right, thank you. Good evening again, this is Susan Wolf Ditkaugh again, this time as co-chair of the BHS Building Committee, along with Select Board Member Nancy Heller, Building Commission Member George Cole. Next slide. Is someone clicking slides? Mr. Moderator, is someone clicking slides?
Yep, we're trying.
Okay, I'll just wait.
We'll extend your time to account for this delay.
Okay, thank you. Great. Is it possible to blow that up into the full view, the slideshow view? Or is this what we're going to do? Oh, perfect, great. Next slide, terrific. So let me start over. Tonight, we'll provide a brief recap of the BHS project to date. We will give you the current situation, and we'll give you the road ahead. We are close to the end, we are so close to the end, but we're not quite there. And that's where you come in. Next slide, please. So to rewind the clock to May of 2017, we brought four options to town meeting. We recommended and town meeting approved Option 4D, which was the decision to build over the MBTA tracks. It's important to keep in mind that the other alternatives were far more expensive. This was by far the cheapest option. And in fact, the next most expensive option, 20% more, did not even meet MSBA standards for classroom sizes and common spaces. And the highest option was 230% more expensive. Next slide, please. So fast forward a year to May 2018, successful town-wide debt exclusion vote. This is a top view of the greater BHS campus, and we talk about this as one project, but really... And we talk about this as one project, but really it is seven distinct projects, as the architects and construction managers keep telling us. Uh, there are two new buildings, um, formerly known as 111 Cypress Street in the bottom right, um, and now known as 22 Tappan, and the STEM Wing in the middle left, um, which is now, um, which has been torn down as rebuilding. There are two renovations, the third floor over the Schlunch Gym in the top left and the Tappan Gym, which is in the bottom left. We're doing a complete redesign of the historic Cypress Playground, site safer streetscape for bicyclists, um, and the MBTA Plaza and Station for commuters. And that's not to mention OLS. So that's what we're, that's what the project scope is. So in a moment, we're gonna take a, a walk around the campus. And I'll show you pictures, but first, just to briefly review our guiding principles. In this campus is really the jewel of Brookline, um, around the historic Cypress Playground. It is not just a high school that all of our children, um, go through, um, something like 100,000 children, uh, since 1843. Um, but it's our town's Athletic Center with Tappan Gym, the pool, the largest historic open space in central Brookline, the Cypress Playground. It's our most used civic gathering spaces, the Auditorium of BHS, the MLK Room, Brookline Interactive Group is there, and it's a very important commuting center, uh, strategically located over the Green Line. So again, this truly is a town-wide jewel. Pedagogically, there were a number of problems. Um, first, um, the idea was that the, that we had outdated and unsafe science classrooms. It was a big problem. Um, we needed to fix inadequate and really handicapped inaccessible spaces for all, um, the library, cafeteria, other common spaces. And we needed to do a fair amount of deferred maintenance, um, with a lot of sustainability features. And finally, but not least, uh, the truly woeful state of our much-used Tappan Gym. Next slide. So this is the budget, um, in the bottom right, it's small, but it's $205.6 million. Um, Nancy will talk more about this, so we will keep going on the walking tour. Next slide, please. First of all, thank you to those Town Meeting members who joined us. Um, this is the STEM Wing on the corner of Grino and Tappan, the exterior rendering. Next slide. And this is the exterior of, uh, in terms of it right now, which is the construction photo. Next slide. This is the interior. If you remember, this was that little Rabbit Warren that you had to, uh, over the river and through the woods to get to Town Meeting, um, to get to the auditorium. This is gonna be the new entrance. It is accessible and is far more welcoming. Uh, and you can see the quad, uh, straight ahead on your right. Next slide. And this is where it is right now. Next slide. This is 22 Tappan Street, what it will look like as you're on Tappan approaching Cypress. Um, it's a beautiful front porch. It will overlook Cypress Playground. It was completely transformed, the space. Um, this used to be known as 111 Cypress Street. Next slide. Uh, here we are as to where we are today. Next slide. And this is it from the MBTA tracks as you head towards Boston. This is what will look like to go underneath the building. Um, this is a smart growth design. It's dense, um, and it's, uh, much, much improved for MBTA commuters. Next slide. This is the interior of the cafeteria that, again, if on your left, um, if you look out the windows on your left, uh, you will be looking at Cypress Playground. Next slide. And this is what it looks like right now. Next slide. Uh, this is the new plaza, the MATA Plaza for, uh, that will be much more welcoming for commuters and students alike. Next slide. Uh, this is what the Tappan Gymnasium will look like once it's renovated, a much more welcoming, gracious, and safe entrance. Next slide. And this is what it looks like right now. Next slide. Uh, the Cypress Field really, uh, really, really deserves its own 20-minute presentation because it's gorgeous, but at any rate, it's going to be completely redone and, um, green, we hope. Next slide. Finally, let me just stop with the schedule and then I'll turn it over to Nancy. The 22 Tappan Building is slated to be done in November of 2021. The STEM Edition in July of 2021. The MBTA Station improvements in December of 2021. And, uh, and the elevator, uh, shortly, uh, in that time period as well. What's in blue is what we're talking about this evening. Um, the Tappan Gym renovation, um, the third floor science, the rest of the deferred maintenance, Tappan Streetscape, and the Cypress Playground. And those are the delivery dates, um, with Town Meeting approval tonight. So let me turn it over to Nancy.
Thank you, Susan. So I want you to know that when we were developing the original budget, we did a lot of what's called value engineering. Um, we had professional estimators who reviewed the project and reconciled their estimates. And we continued to find ways to reduce the costs, as I said, the value engineering, without subtracting from the educational and community program. We knew that escalation in construction cost was likely. We planned for an inflation of 4%, which was the standard practice in the industry at that time. A number of factors coalesced to drive up the cost of the project. And these were beyond our control. Next slide, please. We had unprecedented, I call it galloping escalation. And we had no clue that the 2019 escalation construction market would go up by an amount of 15 to 20%. And that depends, uh, exactly on the, on the trade involved. The MBTA requirements increased, uh, yeah, and unanticipated construction measures in our building project. For instance, the foundation size of 22 Tappan over the, over the T increase in height and thickness due to changed MBTA design specifications. We faced more site diversions and costs because the requirements for the building increased, and that affected the construction process. We didn't, and in addition, we didn't have as many opportunities to piggyback on the MBTA work as the T schedule initially anticipated. Number three, the MBTA required a more elaborate station that had had in neighboring projects and from, and that it had before our 2018 vote. For example, the T has future plans approximately eight to 10 years from now to use three car trains, which require a changed platform design that is at an increased height and needs additional structural work. This change represents significant and costly differences from renovating the current platform. We also faced unknown conditions, significant ones, structural deficit, debt deficiencies in the shared wall of the Roberts Wing and the main wing of BHS. That's where the new STEM Wing is going up. The need to demolish and rebuild the basement and foundation of the old Roberts Wing rather than use the new one for the STEM Building. And the discovery of unsuitable soils at 22 Tappan despite our having tested the soils in numerous places. In COVID-19, the pandemic has caused supply chains and work delays. Despite our efforts to practice fiscal responsibility and due diligence, circumstances beyond our control dictate that we need additional funds to complete the BHS project as presented to the voters. Next slide, please. Currently... Next slide, please. I'll keep going. Currently, we have enough funds to complete the new 22 Tappan Building. Formerly, you knew it as 111 Cypress. And the new STEM Building next to the main wing of the BHS. This shows where we, we are, where we are now. Everything in black is what we will be able to complete with the funds we have. And the things that are in red are, the items in red are the things that we will use if we get the additional appropriation. Uh, I think the story is very telling here. If you look at the hard costs, the variance at the top, the 25 million, and the MBTA soft cost, that's 8 million, right there is 33 million. And we were able to save a bit of money in the other categories. And the last category, we also had to, to increase. So that's really the, where the 32.7 million dollars comes from. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the, uh, what we will complete in dark blue and what we will not be able to complete in gray. The items that were in red and the ones in gray here are integral pieces of the project. They provide educational and community benefits and, as well as enhanced safety for students, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and far superior accessibility features than we currently have. Next slide, please. So our choices are to add 32.7 mil, 32.7 million to the budget or not to, or if we don't do that, we will not be able to construct the projects listed here. Tappan Gym hasn't been renovated in over 40 years. It's in dire straits. An important part of it is to connect the pool and gym buildings with an enhanced open lobby and much better accessibility and provide a community room, which the Recreation Department would program. Next slide, please. This is the current condition, as Susan showed you, and next slide, please. And what we would expect if we were able to renovate it. Um, the third floor science rooms will be converted to regular classrooms without gas jets in the floor and tables for conducting experiments so that they can be used for regular high school classrooms. Deferred maintenance, we do not want to have to flip this over to the, our already stressed CIP, which we would have to do if it's not approved. Tappan Street and safety improvements are necessary. There will be many more students walking between the new building and the other campus building. The sidewalk needs widening to accommodate them. And furthermore, the plan includes traffic calming, bicycle improvements, and enhanced accessibility. The Cypress Playground is in desperate need of renovation. And one of the most exciting aspects of this renovation will be to build an accessible grade path from Cypress and Tappan Street that meet the already accessible Dana Street path. And furniture fixtures and equipment, technology and security systems really need no explanation. Over the last few months, we've obtained buildings, bids for the six projects listed in these slides, and they give us cost certainty. So we can assure Town Meeting and the Brookline Community that this 32.7 million dollar appropriation will allow us to complete the promised project. Here is an aerial view, next slide, please. Aerial view of what we will be able to complete. And next slide, what, the last question is, what is the cost impact to taxpayers? Project costs have gone up, but interest rates have declined. As a result of that, the town will pay almost one half, next slide, please. A half million dollars less for the bonds for this project. That's an annual amount. If you see it at the bottom, 484-673. Um, that means for taxpayers, next slide, please. That the tax, the taxpayers, we told them that they were gonna pay in 667 in, in May of 18. Now they'll pay 637, which is a difference of $30 a year. Similarly, for condo and for commercial. To sum up, next slide. Um, this, the question for tonight is whether Town Meeting will authorize the 32.7 million in additional bonds in order to complete integral parts of the project. These costs occurred due to factors beyond our control. The projects are very important to the community and to BHS. And including, even including this increased authorization, voters will pay a bit less than they had originally voted to do. I urge you to join both the BHS Expansion Advisory Committee and the Select Board, which by unanimous votes urge favorable action on this warrant article. Thank you. Can you hear anything?
No, you could just hear Nancy Heller cough.
That's not good.
None of that, uh, that was because I had... You are, you may be ready to talk. Can't hear.
I can't hear.
Why don't you say?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Carla Benka, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, speaking for the Advisory Committee. My comments will focus on the project's budget overages and why the Advisory Committee believes that authorizing additional funds is now warranted. The cost overruns, despite value engineering and other engine, and other efforts, include an overrun of $13.6 million on an original budget of $68.9 million for 22 Tappan Street, an overrun of $12.9 million on a budget of $35.7 million for the STEM Wing, and an overrun of 8 million on an original estimate of $2.5 million for payments to the T for labor, rider diversion, supervision, black, flag persons, et cetera. On a more positive note, the bid for the renovation of the Cypress Street Playground, including the athletic fields, has come in on budget at $5.5 million. And the Advisory Committee extends its thanks to the Park and Recreation Commission and to Erin Gallantine for their hard work. In the past six months, efforts to contain remaining project costs have included, first, successfully negotiating a seven-weekend scheduling agreement with the MBTA to enable the construction over the T tracks to be completed in the very near future. And second, putting the renovation and some deferred maintenance portions of the project out to bid. These bids are now in hand. However, because of cost overruns and resulting budget constraints, plans for the renovation of the third floor of the main building and the Tappan Street Gym have been scaled back, and the list of deferred maintenance items scheduled to be addressed has been reduced. The original list, which can be seen on page 2-9, totals over $5.5 million. A considerable number of these, excuse me, items will not have been tackled by the end of this project. You can expect to see them in the town's capital improvement program in the future. Sorry. So why vote for the increased bonding authorization? Well, because without it, the Cypress Playground, the renovations, and the currently scheduled deferred maintenance would be put at risk and likely end up in the CIP, creating a large backlog that could cause other much-needed projects to be significantly postponed. And secondarily, because despite the fact that the project is 15.7% over budget, the final impact on taxpayers should be minimal because interest rates are considerably lower now than was assumed when the original budget was developed. Will an additional $32.2 million be enough? Officials closely involved with the project have stated that it should be more than sufficient. Bids are in hand for the remaining work that needs to be done, and unforeseen conditions and increased project scope are no longer issues. Nevertheless, three unknowns remain. The first is the final cost of renovating the T Station, part of the town's agreement with the T. The second is the cost of any future impact of the pandemic. But members of the School Building Committee and the project manager believe that these potential increases can be covered within the larger budget. The third unknown is possible future costs associated with the eminent domain-taking of 111 Cypress Street. The town paid $15.9 million for the property. The prior owner is demanding an amount in excess of $25 million. A project coming in at 15.7% over budget is obviously concerning to everyone. Advisory Committee members have noted that the continuing high costs of school building projects could undermine the public's confidence and the ability of the town and schools to design and manage major construction projects and could jeopardize the success of future overrides. It makes financial as well as practical sense to complete the project now rather than to kick the proverbial can down the road. By a vote of 20 to 2 to 3, the Advisory Committee recommends approval of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have a, a series of, uh, people who have questions or comments. And, uh, for questions... Thank you. Now, I have a series of people who have questions or comments. And for questions, I will call on Ms. Wolf Ditkoff, who can direct me to the correct person to respond to that particular question. So Ms. Gilman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have three questions, and I'm not sure of the process, but they're all short. The first is a question, given the awareness now of air filtration and transmission of illness, whether the HEPA filter technology will be part of the AC in the new buildings, I should say. The second goes to the sustainability and what aspects of the buildings are net zero or otherwise sustainable. And the last one goes to the discussion we had at Town Meeting a couple of years ago with respect to the surface on the playground and whether that would be plastic or real grass. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wolf Ditkoff, who's in the best position to respond to those three fairly simple questions?
I will do one and three, if Nancy can do the sustainability one. In terms of air filtration, yes, the building meets all of the ASHRAE standards in terms of air changes per hour. It's 100% fresh air, so all of that is okay. I'm happy to go into it more in detail if you'd like. On the third one, the surface of the playground will be grass per the requirement of Town Meeting. And I'll let Nancy do the sustainability one.
Ms. Heller? You've got to unmute yourself.
All right, I had to unmute myself. We're not able to do ground source heat pumps, which is the best way to make, because the Cypress Street site is not big enough. But we do have a long list of many, many, many items, which we have been in the sustainability category. In addition, the EUI, which is the Energy Use Index of the new 22 Tappan Building, will be under 30, which rivals the Devotion School. It will be higher in the STEM Building, because that's what we're connecting to the main project, and also because we have science labs there, and there's much more increased need for ventilation with hoods over the experiment table. So that, and that is the Science Wing. So there is a long list, so we can publish that, if you would like it, of all of the measures. Even the Bunsen burners in the new building will be electric and not gas.
Thank you, Ms. Muttner.
Good evening. Rebecca Plout-Muttner from Precinct 11. I have a question about the significant increase in soft costs. There's a line item for the town's legal costs related to MBTA, which had increased by $8 million, it appeared, if I read the slide correctly. I was just wondering if you could explain what that is.
Ms. Wolf Ditkoff?
Nancy, do you want to talk about the legal costs? It may be worth just leaving Nancy and I unmuted, if that's possible, but I don't know if that's possible.
Excuse me. Would be George Cole, who was co-chair and worked with the MBTA on some of these issues. And he is in the audience.
Mr. Cole? George Cole.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you can.
George Cole, Building Commission, co-chair of the high school expansion. The increase in MBTA cost from $2 million to $8 million doesn't represent legal costs. It represents our estimate of the cost of diversions. That is, taking the trains off the tracks so we could have built the building over the tracks. We originally estimated with the T's input, a budget of $2.5 million. The T changed its plans and criteria and protocols, and we ended up with a estimated budget of $8 million just to cover those diversions.
Thank you, Mr. Low.
Thank you. David Low, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11. I'm not sure if my question is distinct from the last one, but it seemed that there was a cost for building the station so that it would accommodate three cars. Did I hear that correctly? So I was wondering why the town, if that's true, why the town is paying for an enlargement of the T Station. It seems like it should be a T expense.
Mr. Cole?
The agreement with the T was in exchange for the value of the air rights, which is the area over the tracks. The town would reconstruct the platform station. At that time, we established criteria with the T for a station, and the T changed its criteria along the way. It was always going to be a three-car station. Other criteria for the platform and other amenities for the station changed during the design phase of the T. And unfortunately, at that point, we were sort of stuck with our partner.
Okay, Mr. Freeman?
Yes, my question was similar to the last. Is there any effort to recoup some of our costs from the T insofar as the T really had a change order? It may be that we agreed to a platform for three cars, but I wonder if there were more elaborate change orders from the T that we did not anticipate and that we could get from the T.
George Cole, again, we are definitely pushing back on the T every, at every point we possibly can. It is a difficult group to move, however.
I can imagine that. Ms. Anderson?
Hi, Catherine Anderson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. The high school is the jewel of our precinct. We're all thrilled about it. But I have a question about Cypress Field. I understand if we vote this, we will be able to include renovations to the Cypress Playground. But I believe that there was another amount of money that was possibly going to have to be moved to the CIP for the field itself. Is that correct? No, it'll encompass the field as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, and we're very grateful to Nancy O'Connor, our partner on the Parks and Rec Commission, for being a wonderful partner with us on that.
Ms. Bernard?
Yeah, I can't unmute.
We can hear you.
Oh, now you can hear. Okay. I looked through this, and I was wondering.
Who are you?
I said it before. Lauren Bernard, Precinct 8. Is there a breakdown specifically of what the air rights cost us?
The air rights, this is George Cole again, Building Commission. The air rights essentially cost us the price of the new station.
Mr. Gray? Jesse Gray? You have to unmute yourself, and we're all set.
Oh, sorry. I had to unmute myself twice. Jesse Gray, Precinct 10. And my question is, is this the last fossil fuel building, last fossil fuel municipal building that we are going to build in Brookline?
Who's prepared to answer that?
It's my understanding from the legislation that we won't have any new schools that are not fossil fuel-free.
What was, I'm sorry, what was the response?
I said, it's my understanding that from Town Meetings, what Town Meeting has passed, that there won't be any more non-fossil fuel-free schools. And I know you've talked about other town buildings as well.
Hey, that's your answer. Mr. Selwyn?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, tell us who you are.
Lisa L. One, Precinct 13. When this cost overrun was discussed at the Advisory Committee back in the spring, it's my recollection that the total MBTA-related cost was, put it something in the range of about $22 or $23 million. And George Cole just pointed out that the $10 million, the $8 million increase bringing it to 10 was just for the diversion. And we've heard about other issues, including the station and a few other things. And I'm just wondering if someone can confirm that the number for all of the MBTA-related costs is now in the range of $22 or $23 million, which is my recollection of the discussion.
Right now, the way the budget is, is the cost of diversions, which may or may not be spent depending on the T's willingness to let us piggyback on their diversions, is now $8 million. The budget for the station, that is, the actual construction of the station, is around $11 million.
But that money is already incorporated into the 205.6.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman.
I'm Harry Friedman, Precinct 12. It's my understanding that when we face cost overruns, that the state allows the town to come back to Town Meeting for one bite of the apple, unless the overrun is very large. And my understanding is 15% is considered possibly very large. So my question is, have we heard from the state as to whether or not they will allow, assuming we pass this, allow Brookline to not have to go back to the voters? If we have not heard from the state, when might we hear from the state? And can I safely assume that no bonds will be issued until we have heard from the state?
I'll answer that, Mr. Moderator. That's correct. And Gina Franconi, who I believe is in the room, is the person who has been talking with the state, and she can give you a more detailed answer. I don't, we don't know from the state. We haven't heard back from them, but let her, I'll let her speak.
Ms. Franconi?
Good evening. Gina Franconi, Finance Director. I have not heard back yet from the state.
But we will not be issuing bonds until you do, and that road has been smoothed. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, but we will not be issuing bonds until the state has approved what they have to approve, I presume.
That's correct. We are not allowed to issue bonds without approval from the state.
Okay, Ms. Bernard again?
Lauren Bernard, Precinct 8. I heard a couple of references to air filtration systems, which, you know, is of paramount importance these days. I was wondering if I could get a clarification as to whether the new buildings will have air conditioning or just like a dehumidification system like the Ridley School Building, which, in retrospect, many of us feel was a huge mistake not to put in air conditioning and would have facilitated all of the air filtration issues and air changes per minute and all of that, that we talked about, you know, with the pandemic. If there isn't going to be air conditioning, I mean, it just seems crazy to build these hugely expensive new buildings without it. But I'll wait for an answer on this.
Could I ask the architect to respond?
Sure.
Sam Lasky.
Sam Lasky, L-A-S-K-Y.
Thank you, Sam Lasky, William Ron Associates Architects. Yes, there is air conditioning in the project.
Thank you. Mr. Lowenstein?
Yes, Mark Lowenstein, Precinct 12. Not that I would necessarily advocate for this, but given the significant overruns in the expense that we're having to pay to the T, do we have any legal recourse, or are we just in a complete bind on that? And then the second question is, on the elements of the project that have now been put into the CIP because of the overrun, could you just provide a little bit more color on what some of those are, and is there anything there that's going to seem sort of particularly egregious once this project's done and those things that have not, that will not get done and have deferred into the CIP? Thank you.
Ms. Heller?
Well, there's a list on page 2-9 of the items that we cannot include. We are including the elevator modernization, the boilers in the UAB building are the biggest, really biggest items. But the items you see in the 2-9 are the items, they're the wish lists, basically. And they include some cosmetic changes, et cetera. But they were never in the original program, to tell you the truth, of the 2018 vote. So they're not, if we added them, that would be adding scope, and Department of Revenue would certainly crown on that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Someone want to address the question of whether we have legal recourse against the T?
That's a tough question. I mean, we are going to negotiate very, very hard on the issue of the station. And that's what will be left after this coming weekend. We will have essentially completed the overbuild over the T. And the construction will begin much more seriously on the other end of the project, so toward Brinkton Road of the building. I don't know that I can answer the legal recourse question. I don't know if Jonathan Simpson is in the audience or another one of the project members wants to talk about that. We do have an agreement with the T, and there's some, you know, clauses which we could perhaps use. But I would rather us face the T and negotiate very, very hard on this. And we believe we have some very good negotiating positions. So we believe that, you know, that will help us a lot.
Okay, one, I have a question for you, Ms. Heller. One of the items on page 2-9 is install air conditioning in auditorium. Is that this auditorium?
That's the auditorium, yes. That's the current, the auditorium, the part of the building that we're not touching.
So that's the auditorium where we hold our town meetings?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that point. We'll continue to suffer. And, okay, Mr. Englander? Englander? So, Mr. Englander? You can hit your own mute button and start talking. I guess we'll have to come back to you. Ms. Cunningham? Well, I called on Ms. Cunningham. We'll hear from her.
Hi, Lisa Cunningham, Precinct 15. I took a tour the other night, I'm sorry, the other day. And I'm sorry if I missed this, but I heard that there could be some significant savings. I heard that um, there could be some signi- significant savings if the Brookline Hill Station was able to shut down this summer. I'd like, I'm not sure I heard that in the presentation, so if you could comment on that. And then I have a second question, which is that I also did ask about the potential for the buildings being fossil fuel free. And the architect said that because there hadn't been a mandate from the town to make them fossil fuel free when the when the buildings were planned, that they weren't doing that at the moment, but there was a potential to do this in the future. So I'm wondering if, since there's a potential to do this in the future, to switch the systems, has there been consideration to actually do this in the present rather than pushing this off to the future? Um, and particularly when potential savings from the T being shut down could be used for this?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the, uh, let me take your first question, which was about the station. We are, uh, we've made a request to the T that they shut down the station so that when we go to do the renovation of it, the rebuilding of it, um, we don't incur as many costs. But we have not had an agreement from them about that issue. And uh, we're going to push very hard on it, so uh, it makes sense. It makes sense from the point of view of getting the station done. Station is something they want, so we're hoping that um, they will agree, but usually the T takes its time. And we're not going to be working on the station until late winter, early spring. So we have some time to negotiate that with them. As for the, uh, I'm not sure what the architect was referring to, and I would ask him, Sam Lasky, to address your sustainability question.
Mr. Lasky?
I, uh, I think at this point, the the systems in question have, for both the STEM and twenty-two Tappan Building have in effect been purchased and therefore planned to be installed, so the reference would be switching them out at a, at a future point when, um, you know, after they had run their typical fifteen, twenty, twenty-five year life cycle. So obviously, that is locking something in. But uh, obviously, the systems can be adjusted in the future, but I would say at this point, the system's already in effect, purchased, even though not yet installed, that might be more difficult, obviously, if they would be a point of conversation.
Okay, Ms., I I called on Mr. Englander, and we didn't, uh, he's apparently fixed his technical problem, so uh, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I, uh, Scott Englander, precinct six. I appreciate the uh, the town's efforts to negotiate with the MBTA regarding these costs. And I have a question that's perhaps for Mr. Cole. The issue of the cost of MBTA diversions on the Green Line is one that is also coming up with regard to the cost of the Davis Path footbridge replacement. Um, and there it's, it's estimated as being at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per weekend diversion. When I showed that number to a transportation professional, he said it didn't even pass the giggle test. And so my question is, is it possible for us to get information from the T? With regard to how many buses, this includes how many service hours, the cost per hour, and the frequency of buses for each of these uh, weekend long diversions? Because unless we can get that kind of information, it's really going to be difficult for us to uh, to push back on it.
Um, Scott, we were similarly astonished at the cost of diversions for the T. This is George Cole Building Commission. And we asked them for cost information, which was not forthcoming. We also asked them for ridership, because we've often seen buses riding up and down Route Nine empty. We suggested it might be more cost effective just to buy each one of those riders a car. But we have not been successful at getting cost information from the T. Once we complete our overbuild of the school building itself, which will occur this next weekend, we are going to be in a slightly more aggressive negotiating position with the T.
I would like to add that the current diversions, we we have had some success over the summer. We had two week-long shutdowns that the T, uh, we piggybacked on, so we didn't really pay the cost of diversions at that time. Uh, because the T was doing other work, and that really, really helped us get the building further along. In addition, these seven weekends that we are um, doing in order to complete the overbuild, there are a couple of other projects on the Green Line, and so we are piggybacking on those projects. We are sharing the costs. We're only paying a third of these. So in the future, um, the cost will be the cost to build the station. And those, uh, we're going to push back very hard on the T for them to to completely cover those costs.
Right, there's been a motion for the question, but I have only one other person on the floor. That's Mr. Miller, and it'll take less time, I think, to take his question and get an answer than it will to run another another vote. So, Mr. Miller?
Yes, hi, thank you. Uh, Bob Miller, precinct eight. Um, I was uh, thankful to be able to go on the tour of the uh, construction and was very impressed. But I wanted to ask Mr. Lasky uh, for some clarification about the air conditioning, because the architect who was taking us on the tour when we were at twenty-two not greeno, um, when we were, yeah, thank you. Tappan uh, said that there was not air conditioning in that building, so could you clarify on the air conditioning? What is or is not air conditioned?
Mr. Lasky?
Andy Johnak from our office is also on the line if, if, Andy, if there's something I say that you need to weigh in on to, please do, but basically, the the system is um, air conditioning. We, there, there's some confusion about terms here, but dehumidification is a term that gets used. Essentially, dehumidification is air conditioning, but it allows one to set. When you do it, you're setting a higher set point for the temperature, so rather than trying to cool, say, to seventy degrees, you might only cool to seventy-two or seventy-four. And that is a method of of saving energy by focusing on reducing humidity in the air rather than also reducing the temperature as far. And so, um, the plan is to, is to um, use that approach in, in parts of the building and have air conditioning in offices, you know, allow a lower set point temperature in other areas. But um, in all cases, that system would be using outside air that's filtered, um, to refer back to an earlier question that was asked about filtration and and purification of air in these circumstances. So hopefully, that clarifies the distinction.
I trust that somewhere in there, you found an answer to your question, Mr. Miller? So let's proceed to a vote. The motion before you is on the bottom of page two dash eight. You should insert the words voted to before appropriate thirty-two million, seven hundred thousand dollars uh, for the completion of the renovation and expansion of Brookline High School through bonding under chapter forty-four of the general laws requiring a two-thirds vote. This is main motion, uh, STM two dash two. All right, the voting period has commenced. Yes means you favor the main motion, no means you oppose it. Okay, Mr. Jones, a simple yes or no will do.
Carrie Jones, precinct three. Votes yes.
Ms. McNally?
McNally, yes.
Ms. Senical? Okay, all right, what's the count? Motion carries by a two-thirds vote, two hundred and seven in favor, eight opposed, and six abstentions. We now proceed to article three on the special town meeting. The motion is on page three dash six. Moved by Mr. Sandman and seconded by Ms. Heller that the select board is authorized to acquire the parcels of land located at, on the west side of Fisher Avenue. And there's one correction to the motion in the fourth line. The first number, the parcel identification number should be two fifty-six, zero one, zero one, not two fifty-five. So please make that correction, and I call on Mr. Keynes. This also requires a two-thirds vote. And uh, the town is already by something like a seventy percent vote uh, approved this acquisition, and town meeting action is necessary because we have to, our spring approval was uh, not effective because of the lapse between it and the town vote, so that's why we're, have this before us. Mr. Keynes?
Yes, good evening. Steve Keynes speaking with the Department of the Advisory Committee. Uh, Article Three appropriates fourteen point nine million dollars and authorizes the issuance of bonds in order to effectuate the purchase of the Newbury College West Campus. This is essentially a technical vote, because this article is almost identical to Article fifteen that was adopted at the spring twenty twenty annual town meeting by a vote of two hundred and two to thirty with seven extensions. The only difference is that Article fifteen was contingent upon a townwide debt exclusion vote, which under state law needed to take place by September fifteen, twenty twenty. Under state law, a townwide debt exclusion override vote must occur within ninety days before or after the town meeting vote. In this case, the select board was unable to schedule the debt exclusion vote concurrent with the September one primary election due to concerns expressed by the town clerk's office. Consequently, that exclusion was placed on the November three general election ballot as question three. With the understanding that if the voters approve question three, town meeting would need to reauthorize the appropriation and the issuance of the bonds, which is what this article will accomplish. As everyone knows, on November third, the voters overwhelmingly approved question three. Therefore, the advisory committee by a twenty-five to one vote with no abstentions recommends favorable action on the motion set forth on pages three dash six through three dash ten of the combined reports as just corrected by the moderator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keynes, Ms. Heller. That motion does, by the way, go from three dash six over to the uh, bottom of page three dash ten. I apologize. Ms. Heller?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Heller for unanimous Board of, uh, Select Board, sorry. I'm not going to say much more than Steve has said. Uh, we did need to reauthorize this vote. We voted in June to authorize it, but we couldn't have the election in September. Secretary of State said no, uh, too many ballots in September, uh, too many different ballots. So we moved it to November, and that's why we're here tonight. Have to have an authorization vote within ninety days. The resounding yes vote was clearly an indication where the voters uh, were, and uh, should be reflected, I hope, in town meeting. I would also would like to thank the voters of Brookline for this very solid support of our future, especially since we know that the pandemic has created havoc with our financial and personal lives. Voters were able to rise above COVID difficulties and act positively about the future of Brookline. That selflessness and ability to put the long term above the present is very, very gratifying. I urge you to join a unanimous select board in voting favorable action on this appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on page three dash six. This is main motion. Ms. Axelrod?
Sorry, that was my cat walking across the keyboard.
Oh, you don't have a question, okay? All right, um, this is on the main motion, Article Three, STM two. Anytime you are. Okay, the voting period has started. Yes, if you favor the motion on page three dash six to ten. No, if you're opposed, and or you can abstain. Mr. Jones?
Carrie Jones, precinct three, votes yes.
Ms. McNally?
McNally, precinct two, yes.
What's the count? That motion carries by a two-thirds vote, two hundred and twelve in favor, six opposed, and five abstentions. We now adjourn the second special town meeting to tomorrow evening at seven PM and turn to Article Two, the uh, first special town meeting, and we turn to Article Two, where the motion before you relates to the Police Union's collective bargaining agreements found on page, the bottom of page two dash two, and incorporates the memorandum set forth on pages two dash one and two dash two. It's moved by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Sandman. Mr. Green?
Good evening. Bernard Green, Chair of the Select Board, uh, for for Warren Article Two, uh, the second special time meeting. Uh, this, this Warren Article asks town meeting to appropriate funds to cover the cost of a memorandum of understanding related to the collective bargaining agreement with the Brookline Police Union. The MOU was agreed on September 14, 2020. If people want to dig into the arcane details of how we negotiate contracts with the public safety unions and the role of MOUs and what an MOU is, HR Director Ann Braga and Assistant Town Council Michael Downey are available and can use their own three minutes to answer that. The MOU includes a two and a half percent wage increase effective July 1, 2019. So it's a retroactive salary, salary increase. This is comparable to the firefighters' union, which is the other public service union in town that is under civil service. Of course, other unions are not subject to civil service rules. In the MOU, the union waives its right to require the town to bargain over its decision to deploy body-worn cameras, dashboard cameras, and GPS systems. These are conditions of employment that, under the state's collective bargaining agreement or collective bargaining law, Chapter 150E, are a subject of bargaining. So the union has waived their right to actually bargain that. They reserve their right, however, to negotiate the terms and conditions under which the cameras will be deployed. These terms and conditions will be negotiated between the town and the union, but will be informed by the discussions that will be held townwide by town boards and commissions, including the Surveillance Technology and Military Equipment Study Committee. The Surveillance Committee, as I call it, held an important hearing on November 5 to take testimony on a document that we put together called "Considerations for Body-Worn Cameras in Brookline." And I recommend that document and the hearing video to all of you, which is on the Surveillance Committee's webpage, as we have discussions around body-worn cameras over the next few months. And as we, you know, discuss this in the context of our Policing Reform Committee and the Reimagining Policing Task Force. The MOU is subject to a vote. Well, let me go back and mention that the importance of the hearing is to, is, as the Surveillance Committee viewed it, is to raise issues about body cameras that many times are sort of looked or overlooked in the rush to sort of jump on the bandwagon with body, for body cameras. And body cameras, in my opinion, are very important, but going into the implementation of a body camera program without thinking of all the downsides and all the other implications of such a major change in how we do policing, as well as the cost of that, would be foolish. So, you know, again, it's very important that people, before they come to any conclusions, you know, in the process of discussing body-worn cameras, become informed, and the Surveillance Committee's hearing material and materials are a good way, are a good place to start. So the MOU is subject to a vote of the union and a vote of town meeting, and this is the vote that the MOU is conditioned on. The Brookline Police Union ratified the memorandum of agreement on October 9, 2020, and of course, this vote to appropriate funds for the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement will be the town's vote of approval. The Select, pardon me?
One minute.
I have one more sentence. By a vote of four to one, the Select Board voted favorable action on warrant Article Two on October 20, 2020, and the Select Board urges town meeting to also vote favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Amy Hummel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12. I'm also in the Advisory Committee and the Surveillance Technology and Military Type Equipment Study Committee, but I'm speaking solely for myself. I am opposed to warrant Article Two because the Select Board and the police union have agreed to explore the use of body cameras, and I'm opposed to body cameras in Brookline, especially when we don't know exactly what it is we're going to get. You know, there's this popular reflexive notion or response that body cameras police the police, exonerate the innocent, and justify, you know, provide some justice through transparency. But I think that's an oversimplified and false narrative, and the data doesn't back it up. One independent study of the body cam use in, of the DC police, found that there were no statistical changes in the number of use of force or civilian complaints before and after the use of body cams. Another study that reviewed 70 empirical studies on body cams effects found that the technology led to unintended consequences and not the outcomes that either the police or the citizen had sought. So nobody really got what they wanted. And that may be why some communities that have actually implemented them, implemented the cameras early on, have abandoned them. The cost, which is high, and it increases over time because the storage is one of the the primary ongoing costs, and it is expensive, relative to the benefit, just wasn't worth it. There's a New York Times video, and I included it in the report, at least the one that I submitted to the Surveillance Committee, that shows various clips of body cam footage, and then pulls back to the bigger picture and demonstrates that what you see on a body cam, the thing that's supposed to, you know, shed light on all of this and give us all transparency, is actually not always necessarily what happened. So, you know, these can actually create just as much confusion as we hope that they're going to clear. So they're not a panacea. And of course, they are, they have been misused. But even if you assume that there will be absolutely no misuse in Brookline, the cameras aren't the panacea. Certainly not in a relatively low crime town like Brookline that has already made significant investments in community policing, something I value, and I think that these cameras would undermine. We have two committees evaluating and reimagining policing in Brookline. My hope is that what they propose is, and prioritize are more practical and creative solutions than a blunt surveillance tool fraught with problems. And they're so fraught with issues that even the ACLU doesn't advocate for them. They take no position. They are problematic. And I'll conclude by just kind of, with the civil liberties issues, which I hope are obvious to most, but in our case, it'll be about 140 cameras and 30 cruisers walking around town, voice and video at eye level in Brookline, collecting data, right?
Right, please continue, Ms. Hummel.
I shall. They stand to show free speech, alienate vulnerable communities, and further traumatize victims of rape or domestic violence, among other problems, which I will not continue to list. We can do better than this. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westfall.
Thank you. Christine Westfall speaking for the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee voted in favor of supporting this memorandum of agreement by a vote of 21 to three to zero. The cost for this will be approximately $314,890, and it is funds that were set aside as part of our collective bargaining reserve so that we have the money to pay for it. Although the Advisory Committee really recommends a 2% increase, and this is a 2.5% increase, the police officers were seeking parity with the firefighters, and that made sense. In terms of the memorandum of agreements, a position on body cameras, global positioning, and dashboard cameras, the general rule is, as Select Person Green pointed out, this is something that would need to be negotiated under the civil service law as part of the collective bargaining agreement. All this does is gives the town the ability to move forward with body cam, cameras, if the town decides that that is what it wants to do. It does not require them. It simply gives us the ability to do that. It's a multi-stage process in terms of negotiation. First, the police need to agree that we can use body cameras. Then the town has to decide that it wants to do that, and then, in conjunction with the police union, we need to come up with the parameters of how that would happen if we decide that it will happen. The Advisory Committee recognized that there were concerns about privacy with this, but since the memorandum of agreement simply creates the first step and not a requirement for body cameras, we felt that it was appropriate to move forward with it. Again, we weren't totally happy that it's 2.5% instead of 2%, but recognizing the issues around parity with the public safety officers and the fact that we had the money to cover it, we voted in favor of supporting it fairly overwhelmingly, and I would hope that the town meeting would support this. The police have not had an increase in pay since 2019, and like all of us, they could use the extra money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ananian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Ananian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. So like Town Meeting Member Hummel, I'm a member of the Surveillance and Military Technology Oversight, Study Committee, which was formed on referral of my warrant articles 28, 29, and 30 in the 2018 annual town meeting. I will say that, that I personally am not strongly for or against cameras. However, I'd like to quote the warning given by the ACLU of Massachusetts. They write, "Body-worn cameras can be a useful tool in preserving evidence of police misconduct, providing greater oversight and increasing accountability of police officers. But like any policing technology, body-worn cameras have the high, have high potential for abuse. Without proper protocols and limitations, body-worn cameras can be another surveillance tool with a disproportionate impact over police minority communities." So my warrant articles in 2018 and the, and the creation of the Surveillance Committee, which I wish to thank Chair Green for, for chairing for all these years now, was intended to provide oversight of surveillance. I am concerned by this warrant article because it is committing to talk about cameras with no guarantees given on the policies that would be necessary to make these safe to deploy in, in Brookline. So briefly, the Surveillance Committee did, did issue what I thought was a good report with a number of, which just outlined a number of issues that, that would have to be looked at before these could be responsibly deployed in Brookline, and comparing them with some of the model policies from the ACLU and from Boston, revealed a long list of pretty substantive differences between the different policies that we'd need to, to nail down, including all the way from activation and deactivation to technical issues relating to the camera system. As, as Amy mentioned, there are some significant costs, infrastructure costs associated with it, as well as consequences of improper activation and deactivation, and footage custody retention and access, which are, are sort of key, as well as to what degree we allow automated analysis, including facial recognition, which Town Meeting Member Hummel then hopefully forecloses, but there are other automated analysis tools that could be run on it.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I will conclude. So I also recommend no action on this, like the Advisory Committee. I am concerned that we're adding this extra half a percent salary bump for just talking about cameras. I think this is a bad precedent. You know, if we're going to pay for anything, we should be paying for a good policy, not paying for the first step in what could end up being a policy that we don't agree with and a deployment that we decided not to go forward with. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Okay, am I in?
You're in.
Not that easy to unmute. Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9, Chair of PAX. I wish I could say I was shocked that some of you actually want us to reject this contract, whether for the cameras or for the extra 0.5% pay boost. And to the extent it doesn't include the many needed details for cameras, that's really not a good reason. PAX has for about six years urged these cameras. Chiefs O'Leary and Lipson have agreed. September 8, we passed a motion rejecting any contract that doesn't have them, and urging town meeting to do so. The Police Reform Committee, which I'm on, the Accountability Subcommittee, passed a similar motion. The September 14 deal is in front of you, and it makes 100% sense. Everywhere that has adopted these cameras, and I've been following it all over the country, has dealt with many details that have to be worked out, and this agreement foresees that. All these issues have been worked out everywhere, and so it'll be much easier to do it here. I strongly disagree also, for once, on police issues with Amy and Scott, including that ACLU, which I've been on the board in the 80s for over 10 years, would reject this. Of course, they ask for proper protocols. You need them and will have them. But the fact of the matter is that I do agree there are no panaceas including this. This is a giant step forward, and I ask you, please, do not let the illusory, a speck of more perfect, be the enemy of great progress. I hope this will pass.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Hi, good evening. Anne Weaver, TMM, Precinct 11. As a member of the Task Force to Reimagine Policing in Brookline, I have concerns with some of the language in the BPD collective bargaining agreement presented tonight. These concerns are as follows. One, the 0.5% additional raise, which is higher than all the other town department raises except for the fire department, appears to be directly tied into the police union agreement to add body cameras, dashboard cams, and GPS at an undetermined future date. In other words, the town is apparently giving the BPD an additional 0.5% raise solely for agreeing to use these public safety measures. The AC's recommendations on this MOA spell this out, stating, quote, "The additional 0.5% was helpful in achieving the right to deploy GPS body cams and dashboard cams, subject to negotiation of policies and procedures governing their use," end quote. Frankly, this feels a lot like quid pro quo. Two, in addition, it has not yet been determined who will be overseeing policies and procedures for these cameras and the GPS data. In my opinion, it is critically important that we have civilian oversight of this equipment in order to ensure best practices. Three, as a member of the Task Force to Reimagine Policing, including such language in this agreement also seems premature. The Task Force has been working long, hard hours, both researching and speaking with stakeholders in order to reimagine public safety in Brookline.
One minute.
The decision to tie such an extra raise based on further discussions on very expensive public safety measures should be tabled until the Task Force findings and recommendations have been submitted to the town. Once our report's been submitted, the Brookline administration and community members will have the opportunity to review our recommendations and can decide together on how current public safety measures should be altered or eliminated, and what new public safety measures should be created. For these reasons, I plan to vote against this collective bargaining agreement, and please join me in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. You're on. You have to unmute yourself, Mr. Richmond.
Thank you very much. Clint Richmond, Precinct 6. As a privacy advocate, I'm opposing this warrant article because it increases the use of government surveillance cameras. This is not just body cameras, but also dash cameras on police cruisers. The dash cams in particular will blanket the town with surveillance. I don't think we should be voting for cameras before a policy. Where will the footage be stored? Who will have access to it? Will, will, will they be public record? Will these be integrated with automatic license plate readers? While policy enforcement could mitigate some of these negative effects, there are two weakest solution, as we have seen with the Department of Homeland Security traffic cameras. The best solution is to not introduce them in the first place. best solution is to not introduce them in the first place. These cameras and the computer infrastructure staff to operate them are extremely expensive. It seems contrary to those who are calling for reducing the police budget. Please vote no on this warrant article.
Thank you. Ryan Black.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Good evening, Brookline Town Meeting Members. My name is Ryan Black. I'm a resident in Precinct 6 and organizer with Brookline Budget Justice. I want to talk about what the town gets and doesn't get in exchange for the police's extra wage increase. Again, an extra increase that non-public safety employees are not getting. What the town negotiated for was as bare bones and non-comprehensive as possible, literally every aspect of the terms, conditions, and usage policies to govern how the police will use these technologies as well, to be determined. But they aren't just TBD. The town in its negotiations with the police union failed to even secure the power to do any determining. And let's be clear, these details that need to be fleshed out aren't just minor concerns. Rather, they are the details that will determine whether police body and dash cams will be a means to assure police accountability or a tool to over- police already over- police communities. The article you will vote on tonight, which again awards the police an extra salary increase, does not give the town the power to determine who controls the camera footage, who can access it, what police can and can't use the technology for, whether the police would have to hand over the video if a complainant or defendant asked for it. I could go on, literally, for a long time, because the town's negotiations failed to codify any specific policies. If Town Meeting passes this article, Brookline would need to bargain again with the police union, maybe even offer another salary increase in order to secure those necessary specifics. Think what a bad precedent that is to need to offer the police a quid pro quo every time the town wants to improve police accountability. Let's be clear, this extra wage increase is a bribe, and not even one the town is guaranteed to get its money worth, its money's worth for. In closing, I ask you to contemplate a question, quote, "What exactly does the town gain by passing this article?" You wouldn't be wrong to think zilch. So before the town passes an article like this, it should first, A, decide if it even wants to implement body cams, and B, secure the ability to implement the technologies with proper accountability measures. I implore you, vote no action. Thank you. I yield the rest of my.
Mr. Friedman. Harry Friedman.
Harry Friedman, Precinct 12. Mr. Moderator, I haven't voted for these public safety contracts for several years, because I've always objected to the fact that these public safety unions get more money on a percentage basis than everybody else who works in Town Hall. So tonight, I find myself in the unusual position of actually having other people support my position, which I'm really not used to. So my question is this, if I could persuade 125 others to vote with me, what happens if this thing gets voted down?
I think I'd like to hear from the HR Director on that issue.
Good evening. My name is Ann Braga. I'm the HR Director for the town of Brookline. As far as if this gets voted down tonight, we will go back to the drawing board for the fiscal '20 contract on whatever provisions there are. This contract provided for the 2.5% increase, as well as the opportunity to negotiate further on the issues of GPS body and dash cameras. There will be nothing installed, implemented, or put to use until further action is done by the Town Meeting and Select Board on what the policy is and future MOAs, as well as the budget requirements for implementing these programs. So the vote tonight only puts these issues on the table for discussion, and informed by Town Meeting, the Surveillance Committee, the two reform committees of the policing initiatives that are currently going on. Nothing will be implemented as a result of today's vote. It just says that the union agrees that the town has the authority to implement programs. Nothing is being implemented as a result of this vote tonight.
Well, you mean, nothing with respect to body cameras is being implemented? I mean, there's a salary increase and so forth, but it's also covered by the MOA. Ms. Khan?
I thank you, Moderator Gatsby. So I have a few comments. Now, I'm sorry, Janice Kant, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15. So one thing, if we do not, if we do not agree to this contract, and if the HR Director and other people involved in negotiations are unable to negotiate a contract, because I'd like to answer this question, it could go to mediation, which would result likely in a much higher percentage increase for police, for the police. So that is a possibility. The other thing is that teachers, in fact, when you factor in steps and lanes, get more than 2.5% increases in salary. But what I'd really like to make my comment on is warrant Article 6. I find it very interesting that the people speaking opposing this are all white, and ordered Article 6, which was put on this warrant by Donnell O'Neill, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 4, specifically to bring body cams into the police department, you know, is not getting any traction. He has, in fact, decided not to move his article because of this agreement. And I personally would like to hear from Donnell. I have read a lot of the research. I agree with Amy Hummel that it's murky. There's no clear advantage to putting these cameras into use. However, it is one area of accountability that is important to members of this community. And so I urge Town Meeting Members to pass, you know, to vote favorably on this contract. Thank you.
Mr. Green.
Bernard Green, Chair of the Select Board and also Chair of the Surveillance Committee. I'd like to have Ms. Braga answer specifically what happens. I mean, I know Ms. Khan suggested some of what would happen, but I'd like you to specifically answer what happens, what is the process if Town Meeting were to reject this contract, number one. And number two, I'd like you to respond to the allegation that the 2.5% was a bribe of some sort, as opposed to negotiation by a union in line with other public service or public safety unions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman.
Oh, that was a question for.
Should the vote not happen tonight, and we end up in impasse or failure to agree on a future agreement, then it would go to the Joint Labor Management Committee, which would take the decision of what would be put forward to you out of your hands. And the arbitration or group that would be set to hear the arguments on both sides would make the decision on what would be reasonable for these three provisions, and it could be much different than what we're looking at right now.
So outside of our control.
We understand.
And the other question.
Could you repeat the other question?
The 2.5% wage increase has been characterized as, among other things, a bribe. I don't think that's accurate. Could you sort of explain?
So in negotiating terms and conditions of employment, which is an integral part of the collective bargaining process, the thing that we have to offer as a town is financial. And what we have negotiated in this agreement is a 2.5% increase that is in line with the firefighter agreement with their stipends, as well as what traditionally usually, police and fire usually do get a higher percentage, as was mentioned earlier, but is not out of line. It is not a bribe. This is how negotiations happen between the union, who offers services and conducts their work, and what the town does in being able to finance it. And so it is not a bribe. It is not inappropriate. It is not illegal. And it is how negotiations are done in collective bargaining.
Thank you.
Ms. Zimmerman, you through, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine.
Amanda Zimmerman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. I just had a question where I wanted to put this in perspective of other departments. I know you said in comparison to the fire department, but there are another, a number of other town employees. And if I remember correctly, we asked the teachers in the spring to give up their cost of living increases because we were in a budget crisis, and we couldn't fully fund the school to the extent that we should have. And so I'm wondering if other town employees were also asked to undergo raises during this COVID-induced budget crisis, or what their comparable raises were?
Here from the HR Director again.
So thank you. In this agreement covers costs for fiscal '20, not fiscal '21. And the comparison that was made by Ms. Zimmerman was the decision by the school department to take a 0% increase in fiscal '21, which is a different year. We currently have collective bargaining reserves to cover our anticipated costs for this contract, and it would be out of that budget. And the teachers that have the 0% continue to get their steps and lanes. So it is not a $0 increase for those teachers. They're still getting their steps and lanes and other benefits tied to their compensation.
Ms. Goldsmith.
One second. Hi there. I think this is a point of information. I just need to respond to something that Ms. Khan said, which was referencing that the only people who seem to have spoken on this particular article have been white. Having done the survey of Town Meeting and looked at the race and ethnicity within Town Meeting, I can tell you that the proportion of people who are non-white is very small to the point that we couldn't statistically even ask questions differentiating by race. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, Ms. Goldsmith.
This is an important point, and one that, excuse me, Moderator, please don't cut me off. It's an important point that when people who are white make generalizations about whether people who aren't white should be speaking, it really plays, it's a manipulative thing. But from a data perspective, we have a very small proportion of people on Town Meeting who aren't white, and it can be dangerous and uncomfortable for people who aren't white to talk about their relationship with the police in public ways. So to use a generalization about race, Ms. Khan, just seems like a mistake.
You've jumped the queue by claiming to have a point of order, the same problem I had with Ms. Brown, and I'm afraid that I just simply can't allow this. If you want to speak and make a little speech, you get in the queue along with everybody else. Ms. Westfall.
Mute. Yeah, I also wanted to address the concept of bribery with the extra half percent. Although the Advisory Committee report said that it was helpful in getting that, it was helpful in the way that any negotiation is helpful. This is a condition of employment for the police. The police union was looking to reach parity with the firefighters. And I would suggest to people that in addition to reaching parity with the firefighters, a contract that we agreed to in Town Meeting because they had gone to arbitration with us, they also feel that they deserve to get a reasonable raise. And in this COVID condition, they are part of the group that are facing the public on a daily basis and incurring increased risk. This is not just about, we're giving them 2.5% for cameras. This is about negotiating an ongoing contract that we have set aside money for in order to meet the requirements of our union negotiating obligations with our civil service employees. Whether or not we ever impose body cameras is up to the town as a whole and not part of this memorandum of agreement. All this does is give us the ability to discuss that with the police in the future if we choose to go forward with that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Vote. The OGT.
Hi. Hi, my name is Marissa Vogt. I'm a Town Meeting Member for Precinct 4. I was wondering if we could just get a little bit more historical context for whether the raise levels for police and firefighters have typically been larger than the raise levels for other town employees, including the teachers.
Well, I think you've heard testimony that that's the case, but can.
I think we heard that that was the case for this year, but, you know, going back in the past five to 10 years, has that typically been the case, or is that just happening now because of the ongoing, even contract negotiations?
Yes. The HR Director, can you have a history of?
Thank you. Yes, traditionally, police and fire receive a higher percentage raise than traditional employees. But you'll find in most cases that teachers get a higher raise than even police and fire. And that is.
Mr. Levy.
Hi, Mark Levy, Precinct 7. Two points I want to make. One is, I think the town got snookered on this agreement because the union has given up the right to refuse body cameras, but had reserved the right to negotiate the policies and the circumstances, which means they can, in effect, refuse to have body cameras, simply by making the, by not agreeing to reasonable terms. But on the other hand, I think it's important for us to remember that the, our negotiating position with a number of unions, with teachers, police, and fire, don't improve what we make them wait for a contract till after the end of the old contract, which has already happened. And I think if we're going to show good faith in bargaining, and good faith and goodwill, and a cooperative attitude to the union, and the police union especially, which is feeling somewhat beaten down because of the call for defunding police nationally, I think we simply have to support this raise. And the question of body cameras will still be live, but we'll have the opportunity to say to the police, yeah, you're going to get parity with the firefighters. We value you, and we value your services, and we understand that your big civil service gives you a very big whip to use in negotiations, and we're not unmindful of that. So my suggestion is that we vote yes on the memorandum of understanding and the proposal for the 2.5% raise in the initial year.
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple of questions, and I apologize. I think part of this has probably already been answered, but as it gets late and the information sort of runs altogether. So the first part would be, with respect to the police officers' negotiation, putting aside the whole body camera issue, based on the history of previous contracts, could the police officers have reasonably expected, and their union expected, that they would be looking at a percentage increase in their next contract, the one that we're looking at, which is really the last contract, comparable to what the firefighters got? And then my second question, which I think hasn't necessarily been asked yet, is simply, looking at the 2.5% increase, is that in line historically with the kinds of increases that we have given our police officers in the past?
Well, the answer to your first question is yes. The second, I'll call on the HR Director again.
The percent increases can vary from year to year depending on what's negotiated. The previous year's increase for police and fire were 2%, and then changes in various and sundry parts of the contract that might have affected stipends on top of that. So the 2.5% is higher than the previous year's increase, but not out of line.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal. You just muted yourself, so unmute, please. Now talk. I'm calling Mr. White, and I've already called Mr. O'Neal, and they're the last two on the list here. So, Mr. White?
Good evening. Thank you. George Abbott White, precinct 9. I'd like to associate myself with the previous speakers who have argued for voting this contract. But I have, there's an undercurrent that really disturbs me in this conversation. And there are really two items to it. The first is that we seem to be sensitive. We seem to be aware of issues of race, but it seems to be in discussing unions and contracts, we don't seem very sensitive to issues of class. I don't think this is lost on the people that provide services for us in the DPW. I don't think this is lost on the folks in the firehouses, and it sure isn't lost on the policemen that put themselves on the line every day. The second thing is that this Brookline thinks of itself as a progressive community. I've been here 50 years. I like to think it is. But the attitude toward a negotiated contract strikes me as really anti-union. And I think people need to look at both of those issues. Why aren't we sensitive to class? And why are we so, these questions of a union contract? Leave aside the cameras. Why so dismissive of negotiations? And making people wait years to get closure? I can tell you from my own experience as a teacher, 40 years, waiting on contracts, waiting on contracts, it's not just a distraction. I think this community needs to look at this and look at it carefully. You should vote this thing. Thank you.
All right, let's give Mr. O'Neal one more shot.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, you're fine.
Don O'Neal Sr., town meeting member, precinct 4. The reason why I put the resolution in for warrant Article 6, and I was not going to move it, was because I was just confident enough in the fact that the town of Brookline supports the police. Yes, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Yes.
Start over.
What's up?
Start over.
Yes, Andy.
First part of your speech was garbage.
Do you hear me now? All right, my apologies. My apologies. So, Don O'Neal Sr., I'm a meeting member, precinct 4. So, I mean, they, okay, all right, my apologies. So the reason why, Phil, we should support, we support this, is, you know, the police are, the 2.5 is just adding up to the fire department. I don't, it was never a bribe situation. For people to say that, I think it's ridiculous. The whole reason why I wanted to see body cameras here in Brookline, Massachusetts, is because I feel it's another tool that we can use. It's another tool that could be needed. In order for that to happen, even for us to be discussing it, it needed to be put into a collective bar, the collective police, collective bargaining agreement. It's that simple. So if this doesn't pass, and it should, for all means, I'm going to keep warrant Article 6 on the table so we can at least discuss it and talk about what needs to talk about. But I'm going to vote yes in favor of this. And I just, and I just want the people to know, you know, white, black, you know, we're in 2020. I mean, look around what's going on. Like, the more tools we have to protect everybody, everybody, the better we are. You know, we'll have time to discuss and talk and negotiate who turns on the camera, who doesn't turn on the camera, when, you know, the nitty-gritty bits of it. Okay? I feel it's a huge, and it's a horrible excuse, and I honestly can't believe it. I'm hearing it, and I grew up modesty, and saying that for us to be saying no to this agreement is, for people who favor body cameras, like, I don't know, this doesn't make any sense. So I say we vote yes on this, and if this doesn't pass, I'm just going to keep warrant Article 6. Thank you. I'm just going to keep warrant Article 6 on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. On the...
You can unmute me now. Thank you, Ben.
On the main motion, the bottom of page 2-2, going over to the top of page 2-3, and including the memorandum on pages 2-1 and 2-2. This is the police contract, and this is the main motion, Article 2. Okay, the voting period has started. Yes, if you favor approval of the police contract. No, if you oppose, and abstain, if you're abstaining.
Mr. Moderator, Gary Jones, precinct 3, votes yes.
Ms. McNally?
McNally, precinct 2, yes.
Motion carries by a vote of 161 in favor, 52 opposed, and 10 abstentions. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we will start tomorrow night's festivities with the Advisory Committee Resolution and Brown Amendment under the Article 1 of Special Town Meeting Number 2. I will make sure that you are furnished electronically by email, the Advisory Committee Resolution and the Brown Amendment, bright and early tomorrow morning, if not this evening. And I call for a motion to adjourn town meeting until tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. Is there a second? The motion has been seconded. This is a motion to adjourn, and it's not a, it won't be a counted vote, a recorded vote. both of those documents, the Advisory Committee Resolution and the Brown Amendment, over the listserv. So you should all have it this evening, and I will not be rescinding. Town meeting is adjourned until 7 o'clock tomorrow evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.